Yeah, that's what I figured.
Okay. Ready to go?
Good.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, Dr. Ewing.
Yeah, we have John Meehan. That does make sense. It all becomes like...
All right.
Oh, I will...didn't have a chance to respond to Susana Rios. But I will, you know, for a future meeting, you know.
Yeah, she knows that you're busy. I knew your video and things.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm glad you guys knew each other.
Yeah, I don't want her thinking that I'm not paying attention. Just hard to stay on top of all these things, you know?
Madam President.
Yes.
I'd like to put a hold on this 4E1.
Okay.
It's a consent agenda item.
Yes, let's see, did they already do that for me or not?
I did email them today.
Yeah, she told me. You'll bring it up? You'll, when I...
Yeah, well, how do I do it? Wait till you...
You want to, that you want to remove something from consent agenda. So you're going to do it before, right here.
Okay.
Okay, when I finish this one, then tell me, okay? Or you can tell me after I've said it, you know.
Okay.
You can do it either way, all right. Okay, ready to go? I call this meeting to order. Good afternoon and welcome to our special meeting work session. Today is October 3, 2017. Mr. Hara Mio.
President Flores.
Here.
Vice President Frank.
Here.
I am here. Mr. Castro is absent. Ms. Dahlman.
Here.
Madam President, we have a corner.
Thank you. And our student advisor will not be here today. And I don't know why, but we will let him take a break. A well-deserved break, I'm sure.
He's studying, I'm sure.
I'm sure it's a school reason, right? Okay, so we will go to the approval of the agenda. I have received a request to remove Consent Agenda 3E1, which is approval of fiscal year 2018 Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program grant from the agenda. And I will then entertain a motion to remove item 3E1 from the agenda for approval at a later date.
So moved.
Okay, and we have a first from Ms. Dahlman and a second from Mr. Hara Mio. All in favor?
Aye.
And I have received a second request...oh, by the way, that passed. I have received a request to remove item 4B1. That's the one you were telling me about.
Yes.
Second reading and approval of policy KCB School Advisory Councils from the Consent Agenda to allow for discussion. I will entertain a motion to remove item 4B1 from the Consent Agenda to allow discussion on the policy.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a first from Mr. Frank and a second from Ms. Dahlman. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended twice.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hara Mio and Mr. Frank, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and so the agenda has been approved. We go on to the approval of the Consent Agenda items. I will entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda items 3E1, approval of fiscal year...well, no, that would be not, not be there anymore. So let me rephrase. I will entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda 3E2, approval of Las Cruces High School Utility Easement, 3E3, approval of Mayfield High School Utility Easement, and 3E4, approval of Americans with Disability Act for Court Avenue Improvement Project Temporary Utility Easement. And that is all the items for that Consent Agenda.
That's so moved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hara Mio. Ms. Dahlman, second. All in favor?
Aye.
So those Consent Agenda items are now approved. The board met in closed executive session. We started at 3:03 PM on October 3, 2017, and closed at 4:04 PM to discuss limited personnel matters specifically so the superintendent can update the board regarding investigations of certified and classified employees, as well as to inform the board of specific employee movements as permitted under Section 10-15-1H2 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act to discuss communications with legal counsel regarding pending or threatened litigation, specifically DPH number 1718-03 as permitted under Section 10-15-1H7 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. And, let's see, did we, did we go into collective bargaining?
Yes, ma'am, we did.
Okay, and to discuss collective bargaining strategies preliminary to bargaining negotiations as permitted under Section 10-15-1H5 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act to discuss a purchase that exceeds $2,500 in the amount that can only be made from one source as permitted under Section 10-15-1H6 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. So that's the report on the closed executive. So that takes us now to the superintendent's report.
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, members of the board. First, let me say welcome to our audience and welcome to the teachers who are here. As I begin, first, I'm just going to take a point of personal privilege. I see Officer Tim here in the audience, and he has sent an email to us. He will be going on reserve duty to Puerto Rico. Madam President, members of the board.
Where is he at?
Tim, would you stand for us? He will be helping the people on the island and representing us well. So good luck, be safe, and come back.
And thank you for, for helping the people there. It is needed, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Now, Madam President, members of the board. First, I just want to announce some personnel moves that we have instituted in the last few days. And if these folks could come forward, we're going to let the board shake your hand. If you'll just line up here, and then we'll come through. And I want you to, if you would, go through the entire executive cabinet so we can all congratulate you. First, I'm pleased to announce Ms. Suzie Hindy has been appointed as the principal of Central Elementary School, and she will begin to...
Have fun. Enjoy it.
Congratulations. Chair is rolling away.
I know. Gets away from...
It's not good. It's dangerous.
A little later in the presentation today, Mr. Hindy will be here representing Las Cruces. So now we have two principals in the family, but I'm sure you realize she's still in charge, right? Next, Madam President, members of the board. Mr. Matt Dawkins has been promoted to Director of Information Technology. Matt was very good.
Not too soon, I suspect, huh?
Yay.
Next, Madam President, members of the board. Ms. Sonia Saez has been promoted to Coordinator of Psychology, Social Work, and Counseling Services. And she is both a social worker and a counselor. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
Nice to meet you, congratulations. Congratulations. Dr. Ewing, that's Saez. Saez.
Oh, thank you. I still need my Spanish lessons, don't I? Next is Ms. Kimberly Green has been promoted to Special Student Services Administrator.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Congratulations.
Enjoy your new position.
Congratulations.
Next is Dr. Frida Truillo, who has been promoted to Special Student Services Administrator.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Enjoy your position.
Congratulations. This is the most exercise I've done.
I know, it helps. Amen.
And finally, Madam President, Ms. Carrie Flores. I get that pronunciation right, I think.
There you go.
Has been promoted to Special Student Services Administrator.
Congratulations.
We need more Flores around here, don't we?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And so to our new cadre of principals and administrators, welcome. We're very proud of you and thank you for your service to the district and for students. Next, I'm going to look to Amy. Amy, am I, are we ready now, or do you want me to continue? Okay, so now, Madam President, we've been working with NEA Las Cruces. If you remember, I did a presentation on testing for the board last month, and I called that Part One. Today, we're calling this Part Two, and I just want to give some accolades. I think there have been hours and hours and hours of work put into this presentation. I'm very, very proud of what your work is showing us, and I'm very proud of what our teachers do each and every day. And as we continue, just to update the board, I just want to make sure that we understand that teachers need the freedom to teach. They need the freedom to go in their classroom, close the door, and reclaim the art of learning. And unfortunately, we're spending more time on testing than learning. And so this is our chance to show the board and to show the public that these are the amount of days. This is really what the folks on the ground, what the troops who are in the classroom every day are telling us. And this is work not only of teachers, but of our support staff as well. And so when you talk about testing, it impacts not only teachers, but it impacts EAs and others. And so to my colleagues at NEA, I want to first say thank you for donating as many hours and as much time as you have. And I want to say thanks to Amy for really doing my first presentation that I took credit for in front of the board.
I didn't realize that.
And then say thank you for what we've done here.
I do, I'm doing it.
So now, Madam President, members of the board, I'm going to turn the presentation over.
And here are packets for you.
Madam President, permission to distribute?
Okay, so just put a thumb up, and we're ready to go. All right, all right. So thank you, members of the board and Dr. Ewing, for this opportunity to present this information. Again, this is a survey that was conducted in May of 2017, but it's really a follow-up to a similar survey that we had done in 2014. And we do note that in this survey, we did have 649 people respond. I think the 2014, we had a little over 500, so it was nice to see, you know, an increased response with staff. The goals of the survey were identical. We are looking at how useful our mandated standardized assessments are, how they might impact students, and really overall kind of looking at what those benefits are with mandated standardized assessments versus our teacher-created assessments. So again, we had 649 participants... So, again, we had six hundred and forty-nine participants and I think this is just an overview. You may have seen this. We did this last one and we did part of this in August, so now I can't remember exactly what you covered or what you've seen, so if you need to speed it up, just let us know. I tried to find it online but I couldn't. So, this next slide just shows us who the participants were and where the responses are coming from. So over half of the responses came from elementary school, twenty-two percent came from middle school, and twenty-six percent of those came from our middle school, I mean, our high school staff. And this is a breakdown of the populations that responded to this, so we can see just about forty-seven percent of this were regular classroom teachers, fourteen percent special ed, and then we have our ancillary bilingual elective teachers and, you know, those AES teachers that are out there. I'm one of those, so I can kind of poke fun at them a little bit to state their responses. So, the next slide that we have looks at the instructional time impact. It's an area that teachers are particularly invested in because this impacts their ability to have that time to talk in the classroom. And so, you can see twenty-three percent reported out that testing impacts two weeks out of the school year, almost forty percent felt that testing took up eleven to twenty-five days or five weeks, that's close to five weeks if we divide that by five. Five weeks of our year and then twenty-two percent are looking at close to anywhere from six to ten weeks. With additional increments in there for probably those programs that require additional testing like our bilingual programs, you know, different grade levels have different assessments that they have to do, so we, this isn't looking at grade level, this is probably just looking at overall what teachers responded.
And Madam President, if I may, we have a hundred and seventy-seven days of school and what concerns me is I see almost three percent of the teachers telling us that they're spending close to a hundred days a year testing. We also see, there are twenty school days in a month, and when you see twenty-five days, that's more than one month of school. And so, I have said, we could close school the month of August, let everyone go to Guadalajara for a nice time, restart school and be at the same place if we're wasting this much time.
So these were days that were directly spent in testing and then this next slide looks at the amount of time that teachers feel that they dedicate to just preparing students to test. So these are additional days. And so, we're going to hear Roz, she's going to have, she has a little bit of a story that she wants to tell about what she has seen over the tenure of her career and how it testing has impacted her ability to provide instruction, so I think that she will eloquently kind of cover that in a little bit. And so, I don't think I need to read that aloud, but we do see a significant, significant impact with the amount of time that we spend testing versus teaching and teaching what we'd like to be doing. And then the next slide is the current tests that we have, because these change, you know, as the state changes their requirements or dictates what the tests will have. Then our tests that we actually administer change, but you'll see that we have PARC up here and then we have Common Formative Assessments, our EOCs, I-station, access, PSAT, AP. So this is ASVAB, you know, some of these are happening at the secondary level, some of them happen at the elementary level, some of them happen across grades, but that's a pretty good number of tests. And I'm going to give the floor to Delilah now and she's going to kind of go over a few more of these slides, but I think she had a few more tests to add. So this, again, was the test that we were giving last year. I think it has already changed.
And I have a question here on, as you're switching, discovery and DIBELS are no longer required, right?
No.
But we're still giving them, or at least, let's see, twenty-four?
Let's get Ms. Martinez to give us information.
Not discovery.
Not discovery at all, okay. So this would be for last year, then?
That's, it's all last year.
Okay, okay.
What about the DIBELS, is that being given in some schools? I mean, our school, it isn't?
No.
No, we're doing I-station.
I-station.
All the I-station, yeah, okay.
Hello, everybody. Hope everyone's doing well. Thank you for the opportunity to talk. So, the mandated tests are up there that we see and that we're familiar with and like Ms. Martinez said, that the DIBELS and the discovery no longer are used, but we are doing I-station at the primary level. And just wanted to introduce myself to those of you who don't know me. My name is Delilah Morales and I teach first grade, so I'm very invested with our younger kids and our babies taking these tests. Some of the tests that maybe aren't necessarily mandated by the states, but we're starting to be asked to do it a lot by our principals. There's some additional tests that have been added. There's a test called the CORE that we have been asked to do, which is a consortium on reading excellence. There's also the PAST test, which is a phonemic awareness skills test that has been added. And while our administration is not saying that they have to be done, it is being strongly recommended that we do it. So as a teacher, we kind of know what that means. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't test our kids. We're teachers and we know that we do assessments with our kids. So there's a lot of short-cycle assessments that our teachers do. And, oh, sorry. And the tests that a lot of our teachers do are short-cycle assessments, are there to inform instruction, of course. Okay, and they're teacher-created and they're ready to go with our teachers. And some of the things during the survey that our teachers talked about is what they use for their short-cycle assessments are daily exercises, exit tickets, student writing, student project, pre- and post-quizzes, student presentation, unit tests, journal entries, homework. I know with our little ones, a lot of it is observation, just listening to them, reading, seeing if their phonemic awareness is there, if they're understanding phonics, comprehension. And teachers also use a lot of portfolios. As a primary teacher, we do use projects as well and that's very helpful for the kids and it really brings out their speaking and listening skills. Teachers ranked which of these they found more useful in forming instruction and these are the ones that they use most frequently. So they have facilitated discussions and I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but you can see some of the things that they do, but facilitated discussions was at the top of the list. My husband is a high school teacher and I know that's one of the biggest ways that he assesses his kids. Final exams, vocabulary text, checklists are really good, especially at the primary level, and it just continues to go on. And these are things that teachers do every day and we feel that mandated tests, which really doesn't drive the instruction for our kids, it doesn't, it's not very effective for us to drive instruction, so these are the ones that work. And our survey showed that educators see many benefits in short-cycle assessment and they're largely in agreement as to what those benefits are. In other words, educators are not opposed to assessments, they just want them to be useful and effective, and that's very important. And here are some of the agreed-upon benefits. They help students practice for larger, higher-stake assessments. They reinforce information so it stays with the students longer. It tells us what the students already know so that we don't have to repeat it. This is a really big one for primary kids, at least in my opinion, is they help identify student misconceptions. It gives us a good indication of seeing what little misconceptions the kids have, whether it's confusing letters or confusing numbers. They break down information into smaller units so students can master this information before moving on. Some of our assessments created by the states is more of a comprehensive overview instead of the smaller chunks, which is really necessary, and they allow us to create student learning groups based on mastery and understanding. That's a big one at the primary level, too. But there was less agreement on the usefulness of the short-cycle assessments that we are required to administer. So, fifty-two point eight percent said common formative assessments were useful to very useful in informing instruction. And twenty point nine said common formative assessments were not useful or detrimental in informing instruction. Again, I believe that really has to do with the assessment. Teacher-created assessments are much more useful in informing instruction versus the Twenty-nine percent said I-station indicators of progress were useful to very useful in informing instruction. And forty-nine point seven said I-station indicators of progress were not useful or detrimental in informing instruction. And as a teacher who works with our little ones who are doing the I-station testing, it is not very informative when it comes to our instruction. We actually don't hear what the kids are hearing on the computers. We can't see which misconceptions they have if they're answering a question wrong. It's a time test, so they have six seconds to answer a question, so we're not sure if they don't know what the answer is or if it just timed them out. So that's not useful in helping us determine what we need to do when we move on with the Some schools were using DIBELS. We're not using DIBELS anymore, but I know when we were using DIBELS, seventeen point eight percent said DIBELS were useful or very useful and sixty-three point three percent said that DIBELS were not useful or detrimental. I know our time is limited, but just a real quick comment, a couple of years ago, I had a student who was very, very advanced. I mean, he was at a genius level and he was testing as a yellow in DIBELS, which shows that he was struggling in areas. He was so bright and so smart that he was actually skipped a grade level. And he was able to see his test scores and it really, really affected him. And in a little bit when Roz talks, she's going to talk more about that as well. Thirteen point one percent said discoveries were useful and, oh, I think we did that already. Let's go to the next one. Okay, and I think that is it on my part. I know I went through it really quickly, I know our time is limited. I'm going to turn it over to Roz so she can do her part.
Ms. Morales, before you step away, you talked about the common formative assessments, the ones that were teacher-created were more useful.
Yes.
Where did the other ones come from? Are they part of the curriculum guides or?
Some of the common formative assessments had come from series or curriculum guides. That's basically what it was from.
But it could be a teacher that has, you know, a chapter test, a spelling test?
It could be, and if it's a teacher, I feel like as a team, I know as a team, if they're agreeing to that common formative assessment, it can be good.
Right.
Because that's what we're teaching.
Right.
But when it just comes from a curriculum guide, it doesn't, doesn't work as well.
And how often do you give these common formative assessments? Is it weekly?
No, well, in our, in our situation, what we do is, we have our planning and we plan nine weeks in advance and we have our days that we say we're going to do it, but based on what our kids are learning, whether we need to move forward with the test or take a step back.
Okay.
We'll do it. So we're very flexible when it comes to that.
Flexible is good.
Because I think with kids, you have to be flexible.
Okay, thank you for the.
And I have a question.
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Dolan.
So, did the I-station replace DIBELS?
Yes.
Okay, and so how often do you administer the I-station?
So the I-station started last year and just to be perfectly clear, teachers were not trained on I-station, kids were not trained, they were just thrown onto the computer and asked to do it. They were supposed to do it beginning of the middle, beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year, and also once a month for progress monitoring. Before Dr. Ewing came in, what I was seeing is a lot of my students were spending up to forty-five minutes to an hour for progress monitoring on the computer. And that really bothered me and luckily, Dr. Ewing came in and said, as long as we did beginning, middle, and end, we'd be okay, so I stopped that with our kids.
These are first graders and kindergarten?
Kindergarten, it starts at kindergarten.
Okay.
And, you know, a lot of our kinders don't know how to hold a mouse yet, they don't understand and so.
The digital divide.
Yeah, so it's really, it's really interesting. I could go on forever about testing and about I-stations and what's good for my babies, but I'd like to turn it over to Roz.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Rosalind Skibbiak. I've been teaching at Cruces High, well, I started in nineteen eighty-four. I was, of course, a child. I took a few years off and I'm back again. And the difference between nineteen eighty-four, when Cruces High was considered one of the best high schools in the nation, and to now, right, a little bit different. So, let's find the slide for the two hundred and forty respondents. Okay, there we go. All right, so we had two hundred and forty people post comments, not the ones we hear in the hall. Since educators rarely have a chance to share their candid professional opinions about testing, we actually asked them to comment. The biggest comments fell into these categories. I mean, there were, obviously, there are a lot more, but the absolute increase in anxiety, the reduced instructional time, which you have already heard about, and I'll say a little bit about my own. Negative impact on the bilingual and special education students, the quality and distribution of the district-level testing, and the issue of professional autonomy for educators. Do you think that we know what we're doing? All right, let's move on to the next one. Biggest, most awful part of this, I think, is the stress and anxiety. Not up there is the student that ran out of the room, my, one of my genius students who completely had a meltdown when PARC was first implemented. He's going to be okay now, but it was pretty stressful. As you can see, someone also talks about having to spend all of their time, starting in kindergarten, working on stress and stress reduction. Then we also have the fact that teachers are also exhausted. It says it's a stressful time for students and teachers. You wouldn't believe how much effort we have to be on the computer while we're monitoring that, and if we get it wrong, we take that to heart. And so it says it's too much, a six-year-old shouldn't be coming to school with anxiety and worrying about the mouse. And for the education and special education and bilingual students, this just seems egregious. Testing is not differentiated, they are expected to use, we have to use the differentiated education in the classroom, and yet the testing makes no allowances for that at all. And so they're being tested at the same time on the same stuff, it's just unconscionable. All right, lost instruction. I'll read my little thing in a moment, but this year, during testing, I was in a computer lab testing every single day from April tenth, two thousand seventeen, through May fifth, two thousand seventeen, which also reflects my own. Students were exhausted and I went home drained from seven hours of testing a day. None of that involved interacting with the students other than to tell them how to turn on the computer and how to log out. A little lesson, I mean, little letter here. What do I have to lose with all this testing? What does it mean to the student and to me? Frankly, it's a story of loss. Loss of an entire unit, loss of weeks of interaction discussing literature, the frailties of the human condition, the joys of living. Loss in training of that most important skill, which is writing effectively. Loss of one whole book that might have changed a life, like Lord of the Flies, Lord of the Rings, King Arthur. All of these have been referenced by former students years later who tell me that that changed them for the better. For the high school, the loss equals three hundred and ten minutes in English and math, amounting to that full week of non-stop testing. Still worse, in high school, it takes three full weeks of altered schedules to accomplish resulting, it results in no one learning English or math in those classes, and then in the other classes, the students are so exhausted that they don't function there. This is not the end of the losses, because then we have to turn around in May and test the end-of-course exam in all of their classes, but in English, it takes two more days. We have to cover material that we might not have covered that the state has decided is more important than the things that I deem important. How much is lost? Just in physical time, at least one-half year of instruction just for high school. If we add up all the minutes from all the tests over the last twelve years, the shocking loss of education should make us weep. And finally, then we send our students from New Mexico out into the world so much less educated than they used to be. All right, a few more things. We would also like to pay attention, the district testing, if you're going to test us, we need it to be consistent. And how we feel about being told that we're not good enough to make our own tests all of those years to get a master's degree. Testing has taken the fun and joy out of teaching. Now I have to teach this sack lunch curriculum so I cannot use, so I can use my credibility. All right, recommendations, we have a few. At the top of always is going to be smaller classes. Anyone who's in the classroom is going to tell you that. And there's no way to explain the impact of the huge classes. More time and creativity, more opportunity on hands-on learning, fewer standardized tests. tests. That, I think you can make those decisions and help us come to some sort of a decision. Help us with the next one. Help us with the joy of learning by providing after-school options, student-generated curriculum, more climb, more time in the classroom. All right. And so we gave you our recommendations here for the last call. The, is that it? Additional resources. Call the PED, reaffirm the right of educators to exercise our professional judgment in the selection of student learning and assessment methods. Thank you so much for your time.
Wow. So, Madam President, members of the board, first, let me say to the teachers, will the teachers in the audience stand? Can we see who the teachers are today? So, thank you very much. And I want you to know that I consider myself one of you. I'm proud to say I was a classroom teacher. And we're working each and every day. We're turning a huge ship, and we're trying to make that turn by what's legal in federal law, in state law, in state mandate, in federal mandate. And so we do that as a team, and we do that as a unit. We do that with the board beside me. We do that with legal counsel on my speed dial, asking questions. And we do that with the executive cabinet, who's here. And so we've had those conversations. We still need to have more conversations with our principals, and I see a few principals. So principals in the audience stand. Let's recognize our principals tonight. And so we'll continue to work with them. As a leader, I firmly believe that the principal is in charge of his or her own school building. And I say to them, my job is to give you the support you need as a principal. My job is to give you the resources you need as a principal. And my job is to grow you as a leader, as a principal. And then as a principal, your job is to give the support to the teachers. My job is to stay out of their way, so they can work. Their job is to stay out of your way, so you can teach. So we continue to have those conversations, and we'll continue to reinforce with them. I have said, from my chair, by the authority invested in me, where's Amy? How many times have we heard that speech? That they do not have to require any tests that are not required of the federal or state statute. And so we're continuing to work with them. I think I am going to ask if we can do this presentation at the principals' meeting. We'll probably do that in January or February, just so principals can see what teachers are seeing. And then I see Ms. Gomez there in the back, our Assistant Superintendent of Leadership, and Ms. Kingry, our Executive Director. They are the two individuals, ladies, would you stand, just so the audience can see who you are? Excellent. Thank, thank you for what you do. They are the two individuals responsible for elementary and middle schools. And so, teachers, I encourage you to talk to them as we leave this evening, or in the future, send them an email. They'll continue to work with principals as well. And they're both former principals, and they understand what that principalship role is about and what they need. We will never punish a principal nor a teacher for test scores. We'll look at other things, but we will never punish someone solely for test scores. And then to my high school principal, Jed, it's up to me and you, with our high school colleagues, to do the best we can, I think. And we will continue to do that. So thank you for the presentation. I want you to know that I'm listening to you. And then, Madam President, if the board has any comment?
Yes, board members?
I do have a.
Okay, go ahead.
Ms. Dolman. I would just say that we make a list of the tests that are absolutely necessary, that are being mandated by the state, and provide that list to our schools and even to our parents, so that we can eliminate what is not necessary.
And if I may, Madam President, Albert, have we already done that? Do we have that list available? Yeah. So can we do this? Let's DL that list to all the principals and blind copy the board, and then let's go ahead and post it on the website. So we'll post it, so that it's public knowledge. We spent considerable time, and Albert looked at what is actually required, both federal and state. And so we'll get that information to you tomorrow.
Any other board members have comments? Yes, Mr. Hara Mio.
I have a comment, Madam President. And I took notes all over the place, so this is not going to be a fluent thing here, but I'm just going to kind of jump around. So a couple of things, and it was on different presentation. So obviously, our goal is obviously to drive instruction. And that's, that's basically what we're doing. And it makes no sense to me when we are getting data back too late to drive that, that instruction. It makes no sense. It's like me, you know, with, as parenting, we tell something to our children, and we don't tell them how to fix it for the next year. It's, it's not going to work out. You know, one thing that was said is, you know, in the short cycle assessments, tell what students know, so you don't have to repeat it. But I would really add, so you can build on it. That's what needs to happen. Not that you don't have to repeat it, but we have to build on what children know. The other thing, you know, the direct feedback of the short sexual assessments is something that we definitely need to, to do. Our system seems to only value correct answers. And I can tell you, from, from my life experiences, I've learned from all my mistakes. And so, you know, the incorrect answers are just as valuable, or oftentimes more valuable. And when we don't get that right off the bat, it troubles me. On page thirty-six of this, it said, what recommendations do you have to support the joy of learning? You know, as I look down in here, you know, and I don't know, I probably wouldn't have a big fight if, if I said, early childhood is the foundation of, of learning. It builds, we have to build these, and we have to lay that foundation, the relationships, those kind of things like that. And everything that I've learned, as far as what's good for children, and these, all these recommendations are early childhood, these are, these are the foundations. Smaller classes, we call it small groups. You know, more time for creativity, we call it open-ended activities. You know, you talked about more opportunities for hands-on, this is developmentally appropriate practice. These are things that, that are proven, yet we, we tend to go off on a tangent when we should be. So, so one of the things that, you know, that I learned from, from my colleagues, is that we have these things, and we're learning about all these things, that the recommendation about what's good for children, and then we go into, get a public school, and it's automatic and stops. And so we have to do our best to really speak for our children. And I appreciate that there's people out there that are doing that, and I hope to be the voice for this foundation and all these recommendations. This is early childhood 101, right here. And if we can do this, and if it's good for children, then we should be able to go back. And I, I trust that teachers understand what the importance of, just by the data that's shown here. So I apologize for jumping all over the place, Madam President, but I just needed to kind of say those few things, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hara Mio. And needless to say, what you're telling us, we already know. We, we speak up against it. I think you have the board's support in continuing together to pressure the powers-that-be, that especially for the bilingual students. I've been talking about the abuse of that system on our students, and, and I understand it perfectly well. Some of my colleagues are here in the audience, from Tomba Elementary, from when I was there, and we've been doing this for a long time, and it hasn't gotten any better. The other thing is, I'm not surprised about eye station. That seemed to be something that came up two weeks before school started. The New Mexico School Board Association actually protested it. We sent a statement saying that we did not think this was a good thing. And it doesn't matter. It's about making money for somebody that has no education, no contact with real schools or teachers. That is my opinion, and know that we continue to support you. Ever since, it's been about three years, I think, that Amy has started looking at testing approximately three years ago. And I see how much of a loss it is for our students to waste their time on testing. So we have to value our students' time in school, and we are not giving it its appropriate value right now. I apologize to the teachers, to our students, on behalf of all of us. We know it's wrong. Know that we know it's wrong. And I don't know what else to say. So we'll move on. Dr. Ewing.
Can I just say one thing?
Oh, yeah. Please.
So, I mean, I commend NEA, Las Cruces, for this valuable information. I mean, I have to say, I really, I didn't learn anything, because I knew before you started, that for the most part, this stuff is a pretty big waste of valuable classroom time. But, so the part that I want to focus on is, what's the action plan? How do we follow this up? How do we accomplish our goals to decrease the amount of unnecessary testing? I think that's the step we really need to explore.
That, Mr. Frank, will be presentation part three.
Okay.
Amy, are you, are you taking notes back there?
We're in there. And there's my picture with lots of policy recommendations.
Okay, yes.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for your presentation.
Okay. Dr. Ewing, did you want to go back to number one?
Yes, ma'am. And I apologize. I was watching the times, because our teachers' time is valuable. I do want to say to the teachers who are here, just so you know, when we're in conversations, I won't get all these years right, but Mr. Frank was a math teacher for thirty-nine years in a classroom. And Senora Flores was a teacher, am I fifteen?
Fifteen years total.
Fifteen years in an elementary school. Mr. Hara Mio is about to be the first graduate of New Mexico State University with a degree in birth to five-year-olds.
It's five December, and I've been working with early childhood for twenty-three years.
And Ms. Dolman, as a retired bilingual education teacher, and.
Seventeen years.
Seventeen years. And so the experience that we have, when we have conversations together, they all match. And so my teacher from Las Cruces, who was up here a moment ago, I just want to tell you, I started teaching in nineteen eighty-six, and in nineteen eighty-six, we divided classes by thirty-eight. And so we were saying in nineteen eighty-six, give me smaller classes. And I can tell you, it was number one on your list with a four beside it. Thirty-some years later, we're still saying the same thing. So anyway, thank you so much. And now I'm going to continue with the agenda. Bill, if you would pull up the letter that we have written, I'm going back to number one, under the superintendent's report. This is a discussion and approval of a response to the Public Education Department regarding science standards. Madam President, members of the board, what we've done is, Dr. Wendy Miller Tomlinson has worked with me and with Ms. Galván, and we have prepared a letter that I was going to send to the department under my signature, but the letter really discusses the district as a whole. And so in conversations with legal counsel, I don't know that it's under my purview to represent the district. I can represent the Office of the Superintendent. And so should the board be amenable? I would like to have the letter read to us this evening, and then if the board is so inclined to ask if the board would give me permission, so this will be an action item, to actually send this letter and have President Flores sign it with me, should she concur with the, the reading of the letter tonight. And obviously, if you have any changes, we would be able to institute those. And Ms. Galván, I'm going to put you on the spot for just a minute and help me out. Dr. Wendy Miller Tomlinson, can you come forward, since you're the excellent author of our work? And Ms. Galván, if we see any changes, can you take notes for those? And Dr. Miller Tomlinson, I don't know whether you would want to read the letter, or whether you would just like to talk to them about how we came forward with our ideas in the letter.
I would love to read the letter, but I can't see it, so.
Can we give you a?
Let's just talk about it. Madam, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent.
Can I give you a written copy?
Sure, sure. We can read it.
So Tina, where's, do we have a copy of the letter for her to?
Do you have?
Sure.
And, and this.
I'm going to give you my optometrist telephone number.
All right. So if I may, I will just read the letter, and then if you have any questions about the content, I'll be happy to, to answer. And it's addressed to Secretary-designate Ruskowski. Dear Mr. Secretary, as the state moves forward with the long-anticipated adoption of new science standards, the Las Cruces Public Schools wishes to express concerns about key omissions in the proposed New Mexico STEM-ready science standards. As an early adopter of the next-generation science standards, LCPS recognizes the need for a revised vision of science education to prepare students for college, career, and citizenship. However, there is great concern that omissions in, in standards that support conceptual understanding of complex systems will have a long, last, will have a lasting detrimental impact on science education. The removal of terminology such as evolution and climate change flies in the face of the evidence accepted by the majority of the scientific community. These omissions dilute the accuracy of key scientific, scientific concepts that may forever impact the science literacy of students. Public schools have the responsibility to provide students with the skills required to become critical thinkers, capable of analyzing evidence and constructing arguments based on the evidence. Taking on topics that are controversial and engaging with content that has multiple interpretations is key to giving students the opportunity to participate in authentic scientific inquiry. Removing these topics would deny New Mexico students access to scientific inquiry, examination, and debate that is fostered among students in states across the nation. Such a policy decision would marginalize New Mexico students and render them less able to compete with their peers across the nation and the globe. The Las Cruces Public Schools continues to experience success with the implementation of rigorous science standards. In two thousand fifteen, LCPS began integrating the next-generation science standards without modification into science curricula in grades six through eight. Science educators and stakeholders have embraced these changes, and there has been a notable increase in student achievement in science in the middle grades. Adopting modified standards not only imperils the education of students, but potentially the economic future of our state. New Mexico can never hope to improve quality of education, and in turn, quality of life, if the state implements policies that drive away industry and leave residents with fewer opportunities for high-wage employment. On behalf of the students of New Mexico, now and future, we implore you to provide them with access to science education that is afforded to students across the nation. Maintain the integrity of science education by ensuring the NGSS standards are adopted as designed without omission of key scientific concepts.
Okay, well. Board members, do we have any questions or any recommended changes to the letter before we?
Well, yes. Assuming that, that the board approves, I'd like to see something like that stated in the letter.
That the, it was approved by the board?
That, that, that the board supports. The letter, the board has voted and, and is in full support.
Sure, we can do that. We could, even if, if the board would be so inclined, we don't have Mr. Castro with us tonight, we could let, Madam President, would you like to sign it, and then just let us put a statement that this was approved?
Yes.
By the board?
That would be fine.
Ms. Galván, are you catching this, so we can?
Yes.
Madam President, do we need a motion to?
Yes. Well, yes, go ahead, and let's make a motion then.
Okay, so.
I will entertain a motion to approve, approve the response to the Public Education Department regarding science standards.
I shall move.
Second. Okay. And do we need to have any additional discussion?
I don't have any comments, or?
Okay. And, and you know, just, just for the record, I actually, oh, shoot, sorry. Now, all of our phones are ringing. I'm sorry, I apologize. I, I was looking for, I actually sent a comment to.
Yes, ma'am.
The PED myself, and it has some really interesting language.
So, Madam President, I, I softened the interesting language, because the first draft probably wouldn't have made the cut.
And I actually, I, I need to get a copy to Dr. Ewing, so that he, and probably to our legal counsel, because it's not pretty. But I, I actually showed it to my son, and he thought it was really a very strong statement, because I talked about bowing to the god of oil versus science. So it, I mean, it was, it was, I thought it was good. I'm not, so, you know, for our teachers present, we are fighting back at every chance we can, in every vehicle that is given to us. And they did ask for our comments, so they got one from me. So if, let's go ahead and finish the vote. All in favor of approving this?
Aye.
Aye. So this passes, and this will then, this response will now go to the PED from the board. This response will now go to the PED from the board with the blessing of the board.
Excellent. So, if I could direct staff, we'll insert that sentence, and then, I'm looking at Tina in the back.
Thank you.
Go ahead and send this out tomorrow. And then, Madam President, members of the board, we're going to do a press release. We'll release the formal letter. We'll also post it on the website. And Ms. Galván, if we would deal, all users and LCPS teachers and support staff can see that we have actually given a response.
Okay, so, continue with your report.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, and I apologize for omitting that in the beginning. Next, Madam President, members of the board, I want to talk briefly about the budget update. Two items just to make the board aware of. One, we are working with legal counsel. We are now drafting a formal letter to the Public Education Department. We're going to ask a couple of questions. One, as state law was passed last session, the SEG was increased $16 per child? Crystal, I'm looking for...
Good evening. Yes, there was language in the House Bill 1 that in addition to the unit value that was awarded in the special session, there was discussion about an additional $16 per student.
And so, we've equated approximately that would equal $700,000 for the district. And so, I look to our teachers, not that you're taking home this much, but we budget $75,000 per year for each of you. And so, if we had $700,000, that's 10 more teaching positions. And where's my Las Cruces teacher? That's... So, that's lowering the class sizes. That's doing what we need to do. We know when the governor signed the bill, she marked through the words "July 1," which is the physical year, beginning of a school year. And so, we're asking, where is our money and when might it arrive so that we can use it? As you know, if we don't use the funding during the current school year, then we would... it would go away. And so, we want... We've started, it's October, and where's the funding? Secondly, Madam President, members of the board, I do want to formally notify you that I did receive a letter from Deputy Superintendent Paul Aguilar on his last day and his last hour of office indicating that the district was going to be required to repay some $21,000 in IDEA funding due to an audit that went back as far as the year 2010. That email and that information is contrary to information that our Assistant Superintendent of Special Student Services had received in a state meeting. And so, at this point, I think the safest avenue would be for me to say to the board, obviously, I am protesting that bill. Legal counsel is writing a letter. We're certainly going to ask for much more clarifying information. This is money that the citizens of Las Cruces would have to repay, and the citizens deserve an answer. Why did this happen? Why do we have to repay this fund? Why did you go back seven years in the audit? And what possibly went wrong that we could look at so that that wouldn't happen in the future? And is there money at the state level to cover this bill? This $21,000, if Ms. Irma's here, that's one of her EAs in the district. And so, we're going to ask some more questions. We're going to ask for clarifying information. And then, Madam President, members of the board, at the night meeting, I will bring back any response we have. And so, if you'll give me a little time, I'll ask legal counsel to assist us, and we will certainly ask for guidance and additional information.
We're looking forward to that response, Dr. Ewing.
So am I. After the science letter, I don't know. Okay, now, Madam President, members of the board, Ms. Irma informed me yesterday... Is she here? She did not have her report tonight, but I'm going to ask Dr. Bruce Hartman, President of NEA Las Cruces, for the NEA report.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Superintendent, following up on the letter that you wrote about the next-generation science standards, I do have a few comments about those. The next-generation science standards are national science standards like the Common Core standards. Achieve Incorporated, run by Michael Cohen, is a DC-based trade group and was involved with developing the next-generation science standards and the Common Core state standards. Michael Cohen is a nationally-recognized leader in standards-based reform, so it's the same group that developed the Common Core standards. And I would challenge anyone to point to an example where the Common Core state standards have improved student outcomes. I asked an educator, friend of mine, and also a chemist. This individual retired from private industry as a chemist and then became an educator for 12 years. Dr. Serrano, you know this person. He is a very good friend of mine, who has a PhD in biochemistry from Columbia University to review the national... the next-generation common... next-generation science standards. His review and comments are as follows. "The scarcity of chemistry standards would not cover a basic chemistry course. Physics is almost absent and instead mentions a physics principle. The life science standards are lacking a great deal of biology, including whole-body systems, cell and tissue types, cellular feedback mechanisms, protein structure and function, cell division, bacteria and virus. All of these may be covered in AP or IB science, international baccalaureate science, but if those classes are cut or students do not take these higher-level science classes, they would be denied the academic content in their high school science classes now. What's missing from a standard physical science course in ninth grade: Newton's First Law, Energy Thermodynamics, Ohm's Law, simple electrical circuits, and lab safety. This means that there isn't enough content for a typical one-year physical science class." And finally, the Fordham Foundation reported that high school physical science content is virtually nonexistent. Entire areas that are fundamental to the understanding of physics and chemistry and essential prerequisites for advanced study are omitted. Among these are chemical formulas, chemical equations, the mole concept and its application, thermodynamics, and pretty much all of modern physics, including all the advances of physics since about 1950, as well as their transformative engineering applications. The next-generation science standards are performance standards rather than academic content standards and rely on group projects and grades. This means grading on group consensus and writing rather than the student's content knowledge. The scientific study of the human body is missing. Other essential life science concepts are absence, such as bacteria and virus. Cytology is woefully lacking and the cell functions, cellular feedback, cell and tissue types. Also, the national next-generation science standards are intended to be a set of science-appreciation standards rather than rigorous educational standards that our students deserve. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Madam President, may I continue?
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, members of the board, I'm going to stand for a moment, although I don't want to take my jacket off. It'll show too much of my fat, but I am a proud Las Cruces Bulldog. I'm going to ask this evening if our Las Cruces faculty who are here with us will stand with me for just a moment. And now, Madam President, members of the board, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Jed Hindy, the Principal of Las Cruces High School, and Dr. Wendy Miller Tomlinson, the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, who are going to present this evening to the board the Las Cruces High School Presentation on the Academy Model. So, Mr. Principal and Ms. Assistant Superintendent, you may take the podium.
Madam President, Mr. Members of the board, and Mr. Superintendent, I am pleased to be before you tonight with my colleagues from Las Cruces High School, and I am also a proud Bulldog this evening. So, I would like to introduce the team that is here. Of course, we have Mr. Jed Hindy, the principal. We have Ms. Ann Marie Mora, the assistant... Whoa, there's a lot of you guys. There she is. The Assistant Principal for the STEM Academy. With her, we have Jorge Robles, who is the lead teacher for the STEM Academy. We have Dana Kritchlow, who is the Assistant Principal for the Health and Human Services Academy, with her Joanna Singer, lead teacher, and Lupe Castillo, who is also the co-lead teacher for that academy. We have Ms. Chris Grubbs, the Assistant Principal for the Communication, Art, and Business Academy, and with her Tina New and Katie Habersing, who are the co-lead teachers for that academy. So, two years ago, Las Cruces High School received a High Schools That Work grant. And with that grant, basically, it's an opportunity to innovate. And what they chose to do was study the academy model and look at a different way, essentially, to do high school. So, one of the steps that they took, they had many consultants from the Southern Regional Education Board helping them, and one of the steps they took is they went into Dr. Ewing's old stomping grounds in Gwinnett, Georgia, and they visited some high schools that employ the academy model and really studied how it would be a benefit to students. So, they did that last academic year, and in the spring, they began doing some intensive planning on how to convert Las Cruces High School, which you see has gone through an enormous physical transformation, but how they could also transform the school academically and do something different for the students in the community. So, some of the benefits of the academy model is really providing equity of opportunity for students. And we often talk about college readiness or career readiness, and really, what the academies do is it marries the concept. So, even if you go to college, you're going to have a career. I mean, at least most parents hope that you will at some point have a career when you get out of college. So, it's really looking at the idea of not just college, but career, and not just career, but how can we prepare students best for both? So, I really applaud this group. They have done an immense amount of work. A lot of it has been teacher-led, a lot of teacher ideas, and I'm excited to be here tonight to hear them talk about their vision and their three academies. So, with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Hindy.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, you have the top picture that's like kind of just a school. You have the bottom picture, which is an elaborate edifice. And the portion on the far right and the far left are the unfinished, and the gym is unfinished, but other than that, it is a beautiful, beautiful complex. So, but what we... Turn over to the next page. What is decided to do was, after our trip to Gwinnett, we decided to break it down into actually three academies. So, we decided to do an HHS, Health and Human Services. We decided to do a CAB, Communications, Arts, and Business. And then, we decided to do a STEM.
Excellent.
And so, these are... The numbers on the right, just so you don't ask, are the... I found this out, are the number of, like, if you were to take that number on the... or the bar on the far left, those are the number of people, 11 people out of 50 that would be going into the Health and Human Services. 13 would be going into the HRTM, okay?
Is it going to have major academies on this?
Yeah, yeah.
What... What do we have to do? What do we need to do?
Yep. So, the academy design schools offer intensified resources for careers in local industries. Schools may offer vocational shops, science labs, broadcast journalism labs, media computer centers to help gain students' hands-on experience. And our goal was to create a... Create, obviously, the three academies, but to like bind them together. And so, with that said, actually, hold on, hold on. Flip it. That's a problem. So, annotating is spelled wrong.
Spoken like a true teacher.
But we got our A in like a couple of years ago, and we are dedicated to the Bulldog Three, the Cornell Notes, the annotating the text, and the CEE, and we had a great start to the year, like a fantastic start to the year. The energy was good. The '15, '16 school year came around, and we sort of rested on our laurels a bit. We had a big bad Bulldog complex. And then, we just bottomed out in the previous year. We took a giant leap backwards. We stopped using aligned, strategic, research-based methods. So, and we're going to address that with some kid talks across the academies, some kid talks, but I'll let the different members talk about them.
Madam President?
Yes.
May I say something real quick while you're up there?
Yeah.
And can you go back to that last slide real quick? I just want to say, I know you have ABC here, and it says "bottomed out" and "took a giant leap backwards." I just want to say, it could be very simple as them making a mistake, and it's happened before.
Yeah.
And the last thing I want to say is that every child that I have seen that's come from Las Cruces High School has said that they loved the school.
Yeah.
Every parent has said the same thing. And so, I really... I don't want you to feel that you took a giant step back because, you know, some of the things that you're doing at that school may not be testable and may not reflect that C. And, you know, and so, I just want to say, I'm a parent, and I listen to other parents. And you know what? You didn't take a giant step backwards. The system has failed.
Well.
And you know what? And I just want you to keep going, and I would love for you to redo this thing and take that thing out of there. And because, you know what? You may have been awarded that C, but there's a lot of things in there, and there probably wouldn't be very many people other than, I think, Mr. Who was it? Mr. Vega, I think he's the only one that can explain this system in New Mexico. But you know what? It could have been a very simple mistake that they're not telling us about because I find out about mistakes all the time, and they correct these mistakes. But I just want... It just hurt me to see that up there because what you guys are doing for children is beyond that C. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haddamio. Well said. Yes, thank you for saying that. My name is Dana Kritchlow. I'm the Assistant Principal in charge that oversees Health and Human Services Academy, and I have the privilege tonight to introduce Joanna Singer. She's one of the co-leads for Health and Human Services, and also Lupe Castillo, and they're going to speak about HHS.
Thank you, Dr. Ewing. Thank you, board. We're very pleased to be here to present our academy model. It's very tiny up there. We restructured our classrooms and our courses that we offered to structure the academies. This particular... This particular one, and if you'll move forward one slide, it's difficult to see on this. These are the pathways in HHS, the biomedical science pathway. The pre-nursing pathway is where we actually started. It was the pre-nursing pathway that worked in combination with our High Schools That Work mentors to, to secure the grant that we started with. We have athletic training as one of our pathways, along with education and training and law studies. And within each of these pathways, we do have individuals who are the leads in each pathway that we go to. We do spend our time working on, this summer, Lupe and I and the rest of the leads spent lots of time working on structuring the academies themselves, what we wanted to see. And the outcome has been that we have Academy Days where students do exactly what NEA is proposing, to have those hands-on activities. They're not in their advisory classes. They're in their Academy, working on first aid techniques. They're working on, working with police officers to write up police reports and so on. And then, of course, our last one is our Athletic Training, Education and Law. And Lupe will explain specifically the certifications.
So, for each of our pathways, we have different certifications. And if you could move on to the next slide? So, for our medical pathways, so the biomedical, pre-nursing, we have basic life-saving certification, so CPR. This year will actually be our first year that we have some students actually getting certified as a nursing assistant through DACC. And then, through our teaching pathway, we will have the Educational Assistant License through DACC. And then, we are currently working on a law studies certification due to the fact that DACC got rid of their paralegal program. So, we're working on, and brainstorming on different types of activities and certifications that we could get for law studies students. Some of the ones that we're thinking about was just the CPR certification for students that wanted to go into maybe being a fighter, fighter. Or, a lot of kiddos want to do FBI, CIA. So, life-saving skills would be necessary for those pathways.
Teachers, I'm going to volunteer here for just a moment. Legal counsel and I have lots of conversations. I think in another life, I was probably an attorney. I love to ask her questions. And so, with Mr. Hindy's permission, we'll come visit you one day, and I'll let Ms. Gallegos actually speak to the students about her 30-year career as an attorney and what that actually entails, and give them some belief and some hope that all individuals, including women, can go into that field and be as successful as she has been for us.
Yes, thank you so much.
Hello. My name is Anne Marie Mora. I'm the Assistant Principal, and I oversee the STEM. I'm sorry, I'm very nervous, but I'm trying to keep going.
Relax, just relax.
Anyway, one thing that I have learned, because this is a whole learning process for me, I've come from elementary, it's seeing how we want to have every student come out with some kind of certification or skill, thank you. See, these guys got my back. So that they have something to take with them when they leave Los Cruces High School. That's our huge goal. And it took me a while to understand this whole format of what, like, the freshmen, those are the classes that we have. And then, at the top are the pathways, which we broke up into the slides because it's tiny to see. And then, as you can see on STEM, two green bars, that's where we're currently looking for what kind of skill or certification they might leave for Los Cruces, at Los Cruces High School. So, I have had the privilege of, these guys have worked so hard to really establish these pathways. And as STEM, we have already courses in full, in Los Cruces High School. It's just, what they did was line them up so that each course flowed into a pathway. So, I'm stumbling over my words. So, I'm going to introduce Jorge Robles, who's been through this from the beginning, and he can explain more about the pathways. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for what you do each day.
Thank you, guys, for your time. I'm in charge of the STEM Academy. I'm the Academy Lead Teacher. And I can tell you, about four years ago, somebody asked me, can you help organize visually what we do? So, that's where I started that. And I'm really proud to say, a lot of the stuff we're doing, we've been doing since I went to high school there, which was a little time back. And we have well-established program. We have well-established teachers. And what we're doing is highlighting it, organizing it, and making sure that our kids have clear-cut options that lead to hands-on careers, that kids are coming out with experience that supersedes even some college students coming out, hands-on training. And that's really important for our kids. They're also getting the option to see if this is what they want or not. So, it's not necessarily always college-driven, but it's option-driven, okay? For STEM, we have Web and Digital Communications, Journalism and Broadcasting, which are award-winning. We have Computer Science, which they are doing incredible strides with the university. We have Engineering and Technology. We have some incredibly intelligent children in that avenue, and I'm working every day to get them as much as I can to help them. Our FFA and the Power Structures and Technology, great partnership with DACC in welding. We have kids making more than all of us by the time they graduate high school, which is great. We have animals and plant systems. And we're growing every day to see other pathways that we can incorporate for STEM. Our certifications, we have Adobe and Autodesk certifications and Java certifications. That's mostly software-driven for the industry. Nationally recognized. We have welding certifications, which, like I said, that's getting our kids' job. And I'm actually working on trying to get a pilot license certification through engineering for the future. So, we're doing a lot of positive things through that area.
Mr. Robles, I don't know if you've looked at the, I just have a question and a comment. But if you look on the agenda, we have, we haven't quite gotten there yet, obviously, but I'm looking for it now. Where is it at? We actually have a discussion under four board items, too. Discussion of renewable energy and translation pathways. Now, the, currently, we're exploring a possible solar project for LCPS. And I think that the renewable energy would be an excellent addition or inclusion into one of your pathways there. And I think that the Excel program is also up for discussion. So, I think there is a couple of places that we can put this, but I'd like you to consider it for future reference, the renewable energy especially.
I think we're actually planning a school-wide PBL incorporating renewable energy sources for this year.
Great, great. So, just know that we're, you know, it's not like, you're doing the work. I know you're all doing incredible work, but we're also thinking of things here, too, okay?
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam President, if I may, I want to, Mr. Vega, I'm going to volunteer you next. So, all those certification programs you have in computing and technology, Albert, if you'll go look at what they're doing and see, we might want to pass out job applications at the high school graduations. We can't find individuals with those skill sets. And so, I always tell Albert, he has complete job security. No way we can do what he does. So, Albert, if you'll look at some of what they've got on, please. Okay, thank you.
Hi, Dr. Ewing. Members of the Board, Madam President, Dr. Ewing. I'm Chris Grubbs. I am one of the Assistant Principals, and I oversee the CAB Academy, which stands for Communication, Art and Business. One of our goals with the Academy was to basically put three individual schools within a school, so we could have these smaller schools. The majority of my teachers in my office is housed in B-Wing, which is on the east side of El Paso. So, we literally have our own little school over there, and I love it. It's great. I've really gotten able to know the teachers that are in my Academy. Two of my wonderful teachers are Tina New and Katie Habersing. And they're going to talk to you guys a little bit more about the pathways and our certifications that go along with it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Grubbs.
Good evening. My name is Tina New. I'm just going to briefly talk to you about the CAB Academy. It is probably one of our least-developed academies because we really don't have some electives for our business pathway that are in place. We're looking on building some electives for that. We're also looking at kind of introducing our communications with STEM's communication and journalism pathway, because they really kind of go hand-in-hand. We also have the dance, theater and music within our Academy. If you'll hit the next slide. We have the, like I said, Music Performing Arts, Theater, Dance, 2D and 3D, Design Fashion, HRTM and Business. And our HRTM program is pretty solid. It's one of those programs that has been at the forefront of Los Cruces High for a very long time, as well as our Culinary Arts program. Next slide. Some of the certifications that they can get are Performance and Portfolio, Pro-Start Certification, and within our Foreign Language, they could leave out of high school with some type of translation certifications as well.
So, as Tina said, our CAB Academy is lacking in our certifications after the kids leave. A lot of it is portfolio-based right now. We're looking into bringing in DECA, any kind of extra. We're also working really closely with Excel. Stuart Shimness has been a huge help to us. We just recently did a guest speaker event where we invited approximately 30 guest speakers to talk to the kids about potential career opportunities. And it turned out really well. The kids really enjoyed it. And just hearing from the community and making those community connections are really a deep-seated part of what we do at Cruces, so.
Okay, thank you. Board members, do we have any question? Are you, go ahead, go ahead. You're not finished, I'm sorry.
Oh, Jorge left.
Okay, so Jorge left. This was his slide. Yeah, so we are in our third year with our plans for the academies. And just to kind of backtrack a little bit, we did have, I mean, everyone knows about the 16 career clusters. We had those, we took those, and we are just defining them a little bit more for pathways for our students. And so, this past year, we have put all of our ninth-grade students into academies. Again, that's not an absolute, where they have to know what they want to be when they grow up. It's more of an exploratory, you know, building on their interests and seeing how we can help them with that. What else? A lot of our new hires, we, I shouldn't say we, the principal had some focus on the academies when he was looking at potential applicants. So, that was really helpful. And, you know, we would like some people with some real-world experience who also want to teach, and they've been great assets to the school. If you want to switch to the next slide, please.
So, in our year four, these are kind of our goals. We want to add more placements and certifications at each level in the academies. We're also looking to build more community partnerships between Los Cruces High and the community. We would like to have more students placed in internships, as well as teachers doing externships. And so, one of the things that we found at the schools in Gwinnett was that they had teachers go out and shadow employers. And so, that the, the teachers knew what was going on in the business. I mean, as teachers, we just are in the classroom the whole time, and things advance in the community, and we're not always abreast of those things. And so, we would like to do some externships with our teachers as well. Job shadowing, we kind of want to do some alignment with the middle schools as well. And of course, just continue with our new hires being on board with the academies. And then revisit the labor force and see what the needs are in Los Cruces.
So, our CPR has increased by 100%. That, these are the milestones. Our CPR has increased by 100% in our establishing Academy Homes and teacher placement within wings. So, that's our milestones. Our challenges have been the physical moves. Like, it's unbelievable. It's unbelievable to get people to move. And I repeat, it's unbelievable to get people to move. I can't imagine someone who's been there for years and years. It's ridiculous to get someone to move who's only been there two years. So, anyways.
I think it's hard with teachers, try asking a principal to move.
So, yeah. So, more funding and community liaison and maintaining data to refine programs of study. That's what's next. So, I stand for questions.
Board members, do we have any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. Thank you for the very comprehensive report. Go Bulldogs!
Yeah, so suppose I do, like, the CAB, you know, and then, after I graduate, I decide I'm turned on, say, math. So, I mean, will my qualifications in CAB, you know, get me into, say, a school?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Your high school work is completely irrelevant. It could be relevant, but, you know.
It's ancillary.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions.
I do have one question. If a student is truly academic and only wants to take academic courses, a lot of honor, I don't know if you have honors classes anymore, AP classes, and just really wants to get the most out of your curriculum, do they have to participate in this program? I mean, do they have to choose select one as a freshman?
Yeah, they, but, like, how would you answer that?
I think that all of the different academies are very academic rigorous.
Come to the microphone, so we have it on.
I'm sorry.
Within each Academy, we have very rigorous academic programs and classes that any child can take. So, no matter what Academy that you're in, you can always take AP courses that would, you know, give you those skills to better advance through your educational career. So. Yeah, we do have what we call universal electives. So, those are electives that any of the kids can take, whether they're in CAB, STEM or HHS. So, basically, the Academy just drives those elective classes that the kids are most interested in. So, whether they're interested in maybe becoming an engineer or a chemist, they would be in the STEM Academy, but they could still take those rigorous courses that any child could take. Right. And I don't know, I'm just, I'm sort of thinking, like, what my children's experience was and how different it is, and, you know, getting into, what do you call it? Liberal arts school. Would that, would they look at this and consider it an asset? That's, I'm just thinking, you know, of how. I would say absolutely, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay. Because, I mean, in addition to the classes that they could take at our school, they also have the opportunity to take Excel classes, dual-credit classes. They could be at NMSU. I mean, there's a variety of different options that each Academy offers. Right. And if they change their mind midstream? So, what we have decided upon starting with is that when you enter as a freshman, you will choose an Academy. If throughout that freshman year, you do change your mind and you would like to consider a different Academy, you can at that point in time. But the reason that we're looking at only between your freshman and sophomore year is so that we can have pathway completers. Because if you don't have those specific, at least three courses within that specific pathway, you would not be able to get the certification that you could possibly get.
But we're going to take it case by case.
Right, right. Well, that's good. It's good to be flexible. And this is the first year the freshmen are in these academies, right?
Wall-to-wall academies started this year.
Sophomores, juniors and seniors?
Yeah.
Are in it as well? Okay, so everybody's in an Academy? Okay.
Yes.
All right. All right. I think you've answered my questions. I think I would like to come and visit eventually.
Please do. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam President, members of the board. This is one more example of what's happening in our high schools. We're trying to give the public a clear picture of what actually goes on in the district within each of our schools, and this is one more example of an outstanding school. And so I'm proud to be a Bulldog tonight, while Dr. Lozano is proud to represent...
Accidentally.
He's representing Centennial, so if we have any...
Let me laugh.
Well, if Cameron were here, Cameron would be proud of him.
That's right.
And so my only fear in going to ballgames is that I wear the wrong shirt at the football game. And so I usually call Dr. Lozano to see what shirt I'm supposed to put on. Okay, now, Madam President, moving along. At this time, we'd like to ask Ms. Bridget Zieglehofer to come forward. We're going to do a presentation with Comcast Cares Day. And so, Ms. Zieglehofer?
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, can you tell by the smile? I'm very excited to be here to celebrate Comcast Cares Day 2017. We'll open up with just sharing some images, because just watching them again as I made the little slideshow, it just warms my heart how our community comes together to support our schools. So let's look at some images, and then we'll move on. That's what it's all about, is our students. I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Christopher, because we have a wonderful gift for the school, which I'm really excited about.
Madam President, board members, Mr. Superintendent, it's been a true blessing to work with Tomba Elementary this last year. Principal Guillermo and his team worked tirelessly, as well as so many other people. And I don't want to forget, because I've done this so many years, and I don't want to forget Bridget, who puts this together. You know, this is an undertaking to do this. We don't just show up on a Saturday. Bridget, myself, Bobby, and Guillermo, we've start the project months in advance to pull this together. And the coordination and the commitment from everyone has been a true blessing and makes this go so smoothly. And board members attend, and it's just been great. And this year has been, with your efforts and your team's efforts, Guillermo, just has made this very easy, but a lot of work accomplished. So I wanted to thank you and your team for that, and Bobby, and everyone else, including Bridget. On behalf of the Comcast Foundation, we'd like to make a contribution to the school board and, or to the foundation, excuse me. And then that also goes to Tomba Elementary. So let me just go over here and grab this check. Oh, okay, thank you. So I think Bridget and I are the only two that knows this amount. So on behalf of the Comcast Foundation, we'd like to present this check for eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty cents.
Our foundation, the foundation.
Teachers, come join us on this side.
Yeah.
So in closing, I would just like to point out, the beautiful thing is that this project benefits the district as a whole. Not only does Tomba Elementary get benefit from this, but half of the donation actually goes to the foundation in the form of teacher grants to support all of our educators. So we're eternally grateful to Comcast and Mr. John Christopher for always choosing Los Cruces Public Schools for this project, and we look forward to year number eleven this year. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Madam President, may we continue?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, Bridget, I just want to say thank you to you and your staff of one for everything you do all the time. It's not often that we see people bring eighteen thousand for the district. So thank you very much. Thank you. And now, Madam President, members of the board, I've placed under my item just a brief discussion or communication between the superintendent and the board. I want to do this in public, just so the public can understand that the way we communicate and that we try to do everything in public and we try to be transparent. If a board member were to ask a question of any of the executive cabinet members, our response is to research that information, but then we copy all board members on that response, so that all board members are receiving the same information. If there's an issue within the district, so for example, a few weeks ago, we put schools in a, one school in a lockdown and the rest in shelter in place. Once those types of initiatives occur, it's my job to immediately communicate with the board president. So I begin texting the board president of what's occurring. And then, as the crisis team is coming into play in my office, Ms. Galvain begins sending emails to the board as a whole, so that they are involved in that information. And then if you'll notice, as we begin each meeting, we come from a closed executive session where the board is informed in private of issues related to employees or investigations within the district. And so I just want to ask the board, we're trying to be very transparent, we're trying to be very open, we're trying to keep you informed. We do that through email, we do that through public comment, public presentations here in the boardroom. And then what is protected by law, we do that in the closed executive sessions. Is the board okay with the form of communication you have? Do you have any words of wisdom for my office or for the executive cabinet? Are we responding to your request? Are you receiving information? Do you feel that communication is working?
Yes, I do.
Board members, go ahead.
As a new board member, I know nothing different. And although I find out when I talk to other people, other school board members at different places, things like that, that it is quite different, that we are doing things a little bit differently here, and they are somewhat jealous of our communication process and how we do things. So, like I said, I don't know anything different, and I think that it's the way that I've grown or learned, and I think it's great.
Mr. Frank, do you have a comment?
I'm happy.
Okay. He's happy.
That's a good sign.
We're receiving to report, and I think it's, everything is working fine right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the members of the executive cabinet. We work tirelessly. Gabe reminds me, he works 24/7. I filled out a form the other day for a day off, and he said, "A day off? I've never heard of a day off." And so we're working hard to get that information to you, and we appreciate the opportunity to do so. And now, Madam President, members of the board, I'm going to introduce Ms. Crystal Valdez, our chief financial officer, who's going to do a presentation for recognition of Horace Mann donation. So, Ms. Valdez.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent. Our partners in education, obviously, we couldn't do what we do without other partners. And we would like to recognize Horace Mann, a name that is not unfamiliar to anyone that's in education, as they support both education and/or educators. And these two individuals here this evening, Mrs. Chandler, as well as Jerome Hanway, who's the local representative with Horace Mann, and they would like to, Horace Mann supports the schools in a number of different ways, and Jerome would like to speak this evening just as to one of the specific ways that Mrs. Chandler benefited from.
Short cut. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, my name is Jamie Chandler. I am a kindergarten teacher at Sonoma Elementary. I got the best news about a week and a half ago, it was on Saturday morning. I love this message. It comes on my Facebook, and it says, "Hooray, your project has been fully funded." And then the best part is then going to school the next day and telling my students, "Guess what's coming to the classroom?" And of course, they're saying, "Oh, is it a new student?" And I'm like, "Kind of, because we got an Amazon Echo," is what we're getting, which is really cool. And so I explained it to the students, and we were already, even though it isn't set up yet, they're already asking questions. Alexa, this, this, and this, which has been already a learning tool, because they're learning to ask good questions and to speak clearly. I can't wait to see what else we're gonna do with the Echo. I also got, this is for me, even though I put it through DonorsChoose, an electric stapler. That is the best. It staples twenty-five pieces of paper. Those little things.
Really important.
Very important. And I really appreciate Horace Mann Companies for choosing my project and funding it. It has been a great week getting these things in the mail, and the kids have enjoyed it as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for what you do every day. No one has lived the life of a kindergarten teacher until they have walked in your shoes.
It's interesting.
Yes, I would say. Thank you, sir.
Hello, board, Madam President, board members, superintendent. My name is Jerome Hanway. I've come a few times to do different things with the board, and I just wanted to do a little presentation on DonorsChoose. Explain to you all what it is and what my partnership with DonorsChoose is, and how we can, I guess, make it better.
Sure.
Okay, so the partnership occurred really, ultimately, Horace Mann, the person Horace Mann is the founder of public education, right, in the United States. Horace Mann, the company, is ultimately an insurance company. But we cater to educators. You guys are the bread and butter of the world, really, so we want to make sure that we're taking care of those people who take care of us. So we found an issue. This is a personal issue with myself, is that educators go into their pocket and buy stuff. It's really, they're passionate about what they do, so they reach into their pocket because they don't have resources. And resources are available at times, but, you know, it changes with the, with time. So you can see five hundred dollars a year per teacher. If they were to take that money, put it into their retirement account, they would be able to earn about forty thousand dollars a year at a six percent interest. So I'm hoping that this empowers educators to invest in themselves, and I want to teach them, I always call it teach and preach, how you can invest in your own retirement. So DonorsChoose, really, you know, it's talking about resources and getting different projects funded. It's really a tool that is, it's exciting for me, and it's near and dear to my heart. Everybody knows what a GoFundMe account is, right? So DonorsChoose is GoFundMe for educators. It's a nonprofit organization. You set up a little profile of who you are, where you are, what you teach, and then you, I call it the wish list. You put in there what you want, what you need, and hopefully, we can, you know, get it funded. So DonorsChoose is, you know, across the nation, as you can see, since 2000, it's nine hundred and seven thousand classroom projects. It affected twenty-two point six million students, and they raised about, you know, five hundred and thirty-six million dollars across the nation. Seventy percent of all projects get funded, and that's under five hundred dollars.
Wow.
And it works. It definitely works, as you can see. So Los Cruces Public Schools, when I first started here with Horace Mann, we earned about, we actually earned exactly eighty-six hundred dollars, eighty-six, eighty-six hundred dollars. So really, when I came in, I saw the void there, because Albuquerque Public Schools earns about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars each year consistently. So right away, I said, "We gotta take care of this," because there's no way, Albuquerque's bigger, but we beat 'em in everything. So there's no way that we're gonna continue this. So Horace Mann, we funded agents. We funded a hundred and five thousand projects. Nine million students were affected at sixty-six million dollars. And these are projects that we fund, that you can see through educators locally and across the nation. So my schools that I, that I, you know, cater to and I visit, we earned a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in 2016. In Los Cruces Public Schools, seventy-three projects were fully funded. It affected ninety-two, or ninety-four oh-two students. So in 2016, like I said, we earned, 2015, we earned eight, you know, eighty-six hundred dollars. In 2016, full calendar year, we earned sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Excellent.
So I really, I'm really proud of that number, and I show it off as much as I can to other agents, to other school districts, because I come from Los Cruces Public Schools. So you guys are near and dear to my heart, and I make sure that you guys are taken care of always. So I want to make sure that we continue that number, and again, I want to grow this number consistently, and make sure that our classroom teachers are being able to have access to this money. And year after year, I think... And year after year, I think we should be able to grow this consistently so we can beat Albuquerque consistently. So, you know, I really, it's really simple, you know, some of the projects, it's, like I said, you set up a profile. Once you do your profile, you'll set up a project, something near and dear to your heart. I instruct most teachers to try to keep it about $300 to $400, because 70% of all those projects get fully funded. I try to give the secrets and the tools that I know that make it more successful. So some of those, we actually were sitting down, and I had, I explained to her, you know, you should try to always have two projects in, because you can get access to more funds. So there's, there's a lot of tricks of the trade to be successful with this, and I want to make sure that I'm able to pass that on to educators and continue to do that. So let me see, I think it has a delay on there. Oh, sorry. So again, this is what happens, a project's posted, it gets fully funded. Once it's fully funded, it gets sent directly to the school. So there are no POs involved, there's not any extra legwork that administrative staff has to do, there's not anything that's extra. We don't want to give anybody extra work, because they have enough to do. So we want to make sure that we streamline it and make it as simple as possible. That is the essence of Donors Choose. It was actually created by two high school teachers, and they saw the need, and they took advantage of what they could do out there, and they've streamlined it very efficiently for educators, so we don't have extra work for, for the educators. Okay? So the best way to use this is, these are some of the tricks that we use, is social media, you know, of course, grandparents, relatives, different people that are within your, your local network, and then community involvement, you know, like Comcast and different places like that. Dick's Sporting Goods is a sponsor, Chevron is a sponsor, Disney is a sponsor, Bill and Melinda Gates are sponsors, Oprah Winfrey is a sponsor, my company, Horace Mann is a sponsor. So there's many, many more sponsors out there, and they look for projects that are near and dear to their heart. So if it's something technology-driven, Google is going to jump on board and try to take advantage of that, or Bill and Melinda Gates. There is many, many assets and accessibility for different projects. I've actually had projects fully funded for the low incidence students that needed, you know, I said, "You know what? We'll just go in there and I'll work at it," you know. I've never seen anybody get projects for that, so I said, "I'm going to work with you, because I'm going to learn just like you're going to learn." And we sat down, went through there, and everything that she needed was, she was able to shop through Amazon, find what she needed, posted it, the project was fully funded. So there's everything in there, anything that you can imagine. There's continued education for the teachers, there's school buses that can be funded, there's gift certificates if they need, gift certificates that, you know, something that they can't buy online or through Amazon. So I mean, really, anything you can think of that's for the schools is in there. So possible issues, I wanted to put this in there just because these are some of the issues that I've seen going forward, is wrong technology. Somebody gets something that's not compatible with the IT department. So those are some of the issues that people have had, technology not being tagged, because this technology that comes to the school, every, even though the teacher gets it and it's fully funded, it belongs to the school. So it belongs to the district. The one thing is that we got to make sure that we're tagging it, and then once it's past its useful life, it needs to be destroyed, because in the past, not here in Los Cruces, but other locations, they've let the teacher take them home, or give them to a student or something, and that's just not proper protocol. So those are some of the watchouts. This is about Horace Mann. He's the founder of public education. I also do other workshops for the school district, which are Donors Choose workshops, retirement workshops, 403B, student loan forgiveness, and insurance education. And I would, they left already, but I would be interested in visiting with the Los Cruces Public Schools as well for business and talk to them about educating people on insurance. That's a, that's a huge miss for a lot of people. So, and that's me.
Thank you, Mr. Hanway.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hanway. And congratulations on your project being selected. We appreciate your devotion to education.
Sure. And if you want access to the employees, I'll ask you to work with Crystal, and whenever we set up information where we're giving them information on benefits, I encourage you to do that, along with our other vendors as well.
Yes.
They don't understand the 403B, and we've now opened 457B as well, and they don't understand those benefits, but they will later.
Yeah.
As Arlinda sits in the chair, Arlinda and I can say, we understand those very well now. So we want you to show, and when I see a young kindergarten teacher, look at those numbers, saving $500 a year. When you become as young and beautiful as Arlinda and I are, you'll appreciate your bank account, so yes, thank you.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes us on to instruction, I think?
Yes, ma'am, that concludes my report.
Okay. And so then, Ms. Martinez.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Superintendent. This evening, the academic division has two presentations for you, and we are going to be providing you an update on our Excel program and also an update on our civic education. And with that, I am going to ask Dr. Tomlinson to come up. We've been keeping her busy tonight, so she's earning her keep tonight. So, Dr. Wendy, if you would, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, so I need one of those day off forms that you were talking about, Dr. Ewing.
They don't exist.
That's what I'm hearing. So first, I just want to provide a brief update on our Excel career education program, because this is a highly visible program in our community, and we have made some shifts this year, and we intend on making a few more shifts in the future. So I just wanted to, to brief the board on that. And before I start, I'd like to introduce Carrie Hernandez, who is out here in the crowd, and she is our coordinator of career and technical education, and she works directly with the Excel program. And Carrie was with us as a teacher, and went away, and worked for a charter school, and worked for the public education department, although we don't, we like her anyway. And so she's back, and she's a great asset to us, so I appreciate her. So if we could have the next slide. So the purpose of the Excel program is really to give students the opportunity to have field-based career experience. And it's one thing to learn about things in a classroom setting, and it's another things to get out there, get in the field, and really see how, how it works in, in the real world, so to speak. So that's briefly, you know, the purpose of the program. Excel has been around for a number of years, and it continues to be a very popular elective with our students to get this work experience. Next slide, Bill.
Wendy, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you one second. Mr. Hockes, would you check your phone and then go get on the telephone in my office?
I think we were on it, but I will.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, can I?
No worries.
I apologize.
Next slide, please. So we have four Excel teachers, and we are shifting their, their title to be more of career specialists. And really, what they do is to provide career readiness support for students, and this year, we have them working more at the school sites to assist administrators and counselors, CTE teachers, to really be more of a career and technical education managers, advisors, PLC leaders, working with teachers, working with our career and technical education student organizations such as HOSA, FFA, some of those organizations. So really, kind of being the go-to coordinator for many of these programs. Next slide. So high school engagement, you can see the students by placement at each of our high schools, so that's a nice pie graph that one of our career specialists made for us, and it shows the breakdown. And the next slide, I believe, shows the numbers per high school. So the shift that we've made this year is, before the, the career specialists were centralized and they had an office at Rio Ground Prep. And so that really made Excel an elective rather than something that was kind of a trajectory for students and a CTE completer. Earlier, when the Los Cruces High School group, they were talking about CTE completion, you know, that's a metric that our high schools are graded on, and that's something that we want for our students to be able to finish that trajectory. So really, what we would like to do, here you see the number of students we have per high school. So we decentralized the teachers, and now each of them is assigned to one of the comprehensive high schools. So they're actually housed on campus, they teach a couple of classes there, and so they are really more engaged with what students need, starting from the freshman year, getting to know students, what their interests are, and help with that career advisement, rather than just catching them when they're juniors and they need an elective. And so I think this will be a much more efficient process in the future, I won't lie. It's been a little bumpy making the transition, because not only did we decentralize, some of our folks retired, so we had to replace them, and they've really done a great job being new, and they've really infused a lot of life into the program with Ms. Hernandez's help. Next slide, please. So this shows the work placements by field, and you'll notice it's very consistent with what Los Cruces High School was telling us early, earlier about the projected growth for career fields in New Mexico. So most of our students are interested in the healthcare industry, hospitality industry, law. I'm glad to see that a number of them are interested in education, and we are trying to grow our own teachers and really encourage teachers to, or students to go into pre-education and education once they leave us. Next slide. So these are some of our industry partners, and I, there's probably some that aren't on here, but you see, there are a number of businesses and agencies in our community that partner with us and have Excel students as, as job site employees there. Of course, they're not paid, these are unpaid internships that they are doing, and we're very fortunate to have the industry partners. Los Cruces High School mentioned Mr. Shimnitz, who is the career specialist that's assigned to Los Cruces High, and he's really been an integral part of kind of coordinating their career education and internship efforts. So we don't have, you know, 10 different people from our schools calling businesses. Businesses get very fatigued, they, they don't really understand the things that are going on. So our career specialists are really kind of a flow-through for all of our outreach efforts to businesses. And that way, when someone calls, they, they know who we are and, and what we're doing, rather than having a number of different people reaching out. So I think, I think that's very important for our community relations. Next slide. So one of the things that we'd like to do, since we shook it up already, we're going to keep shaking it, is to transition the Excel program to really be a capstone rather than just an elective. So if a student is interested in STEM, they take the STEM electives, when they get to their junior or senior year, that they're taking a course that really immerses them into the field, and that that's kind of the, you know, the experience that they can use as a jumping off point into a career or into post-secondary education. So the numbers I showed you earlier, I think we have 235 students. We really want to shrink that and make it more purposeful, because we have a lot of students that they just needed to fill a hole in their schedule, and really, we want this program to, to be the end of their career exploration experience. The other thing, and this will probably require or take a few years to get done, but to develop a comprehensive college and career readiness center at each high school, which these career specialists could facilitate. We have a lot of students that kind of, you know, are in the middle, and we have a lot of parents that have questions, and we have, you know, college nights and financial aid nights, but really, it would be nice to have a place in every high school where parents could come and get information about careers, about college, about financial aid, any kinds of questions about those things. Take some of these industry certification tests when they're ready, and just do a number of things to help propel students to the next level. So that's kind of been a dream of mine over the last few years, and so we're really starting to be purposeful about moving in that direction. I think it would be a great asset to our high schools and to our families. So with that, I will stand for questions.
Well, board members, do we have any questions or comments? I think we're good.
I'm wearing you guys out, aren't I? I got one more, too.
You can go ahead and, and go to number two, I think.
Okay, thank you. So, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, the next presentation is on civic education and youth engagement, and this is something that, you know, I was a social studies teacher for 17 years, and this is something that I'm very passionate about, and as the parent of a young child, I'm, I'm always interested in what we are doing in civic education in our schools, both for my daughter and her peers. So I'm just going to, I'm going to try not to bore you too much, but I'm going to start with the New Mexico standards and benchmarks. If we could look at the next slide. So there is a strand in the New Mexico standards and benchmarks on civics and government, and it's pretty lofty, as some of these things are. It's talking about ideals, rights, responsibilities, the founding documents, focusing on the United States, the New Mexico Constitution, the function of government. So how do we do that? What is the progression? What does that look like in the classroom? So what I did is I broke down the benchmarks, if we could look at the next slide. So in, and these are banded by grade. So in K4, and as a curriculum person, one of the things that we do when we look at standards is really look at the expectation or the verb, and then look at the content or the concept, which are kind of the nouns in the benchmark. And so we start in the early grades with just familiarization, as we get into the intermediate and middle grades, kind of demonstrating and understanding. And then in high school, a more complex level of comparing and analyzing. So this benchmark 3A in that strand is just talking about the purpose of government. What is a government? What is the structure? What does the government do? Next slide. So benchmark 3B is really talking about a lot of the things that I think we do at the elementary level, the symbols, the icons, traditions, the heroes, and holidays. Sometimes it's referred as, as familiarizing students with those things, and then as they get older, why are those things important? And then, once they get to the high school level, really analyzing how they exemplify some of the ideals of our government and our society. Next slide, please. The next benchmark, again, has to do with the purpose of government, with a more of a philosophical look at government. What are some of the philosophies behind democracy and the foundation of the US political system? So here, we have, you see at the upper levels comparing and contrasting our political philosophy, our political ideals, and with those of governments around the world. So you have a little bit of comparative politics in there. And the next slide. And the next slide. And then, the, the final benchmark for the civics and government strand are the rights and responsibilities of good citizenship. And I know this is something that is a focus and there are a lot of folks very interested in how do we get students to engage? How do we have civic and civil conversations, which I think has been lost in this country and we'll talk about that in a second. So, again, understanding, explaining, and then comparing and analyzing some of these things, the structure, power, purpose of government and how, how can we be good citizens and what are our rights and responsibilities? Next slide. So, why civic education? And I, I put this in here because I think it's important because I, we've gotten away from this and I think it's important to remember, to remember that really, public education was, you know, the underpending, the underpinnings of public education were to keep our democracy going and I think that we need to refocus on those areas. So, these are some things from the Education Commission of the state, you know, how they define civic education, some things of particular interest, I think, in closing, closing the empowerment gap. Everyone has a voice, but how do they use it? When do they use it? Where do they use it? I think those are, are definitely important things to pass along to students. Next slide. So, some of the challenges to civic education, like I said, I think in the, in the past several years, we've gotten away from this and it goes back to our early conversation regarding testing. And what's tested is what's important and that's kind of been the, the attitude and the mantra. I worked in Texas for a number of years and, you know, Texas is kind of the, the granddaddy of standardized testing and, you know, that was the focus. And we really got away in the No Child Left Behind years from the joy of learning and teaching things that are important. Also, the politi- the politicization of the standards, I think, has also been, I was on a writing committee when the Texas Social Studies standards were rewritten a few years ago and there were fistfights in some of those committees regarding who and what we're going to go in the standard. So, it's very, you know, it's very sensitive and I think we've gotten away from really the meaning of civics and how do we engage and, and how do we have a conversation. The other thing, some of, some of our instructional materials lack focus on civics, so how do we bring this back into the classroom if our, if our textbooks and other materials don't have a great focus? And we just did a social studies adoption and it's better, it's better than it used to be. And emphasis on other curricular areas has limited funding. This is the first social studies adoption in, since, I don't want to say the wrong year, but it's been a long time since we got any social studies books. And so, that's because, again, math, science, or math and reading are tested, they're important and everything else kind of fell by the wayside. Next slide, please. So, some of the things that we're focusing on here regarding civic education, engagement, how do you engage? And I think this is important for all students, you don't have to be 18, you don't have to be a voter to be able to engage. So, how do you do that and why do you do that? Why is it important to come to a school board meeting, to a city council meeting? You know, demonstrating to students how, how to engage voter registration and the importance of youth voting. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters and there is a youth engagement committee that I am also a member of in that organization and they are really interested in how do we get young people to understand, not just to get them to vote, but to understand why it's important. And so, that's an initiative that that group is working on. Community service and volunteerism, I see a lot more of that embedded in our student organizations, in our classrooms. Advocacy, how do we speak up for ourselves, for those who may need an advocate? And then, how to be good consumers of information and how to create information that is relevant and factual. Next slide. So, some of the things we're doing, we have active student government organizations at our high schools, they promote service and leadership. One of the things that I was talking to some of our student advisory council members was, you know, our, our student governments do great things like sponsor the homecoming dance and things like that, but how do we really inject some governance into those groups? And that's something that they were very interested in. The student advisory structure, of course, that we have here to elicit student input on school district functions, having a student sit on the dais at the meetings. We have many partnerships through NLSA, the County Clerk's Office, Scott Krailing was here last time and spoke, the League of Women Voters, those are just a few organizations that are actively promoting civic education in our schools. And finally, one of the things that really struck me when we did this social studies adoption is that, so we, we have all these new materials, but there's really not any guidance for teachers and there's a huge amount of standards. We just looked at one strand of the standards. So, there are all these standards and benchmarks, there are, you know, now this wealth of materials. So, what we're going to do is we're going to embark on a project with teachers of how do we draw out what's important out of those standards, out of the materials and, and help kind of put the big rocks in place for teachers to follow, really focusing on civic education and cultural awareness. So, that's what I have to say about civic education. I could go on, but I'm sure you don't want me to. So, with that, I will stand for questions.
Okay, board members, questions or comments? I know I have one.
No questions.
Okay. The Ethnic Studies Initiative is definitely something that will, the task force that has been working will enhance civic education and awareness, create cultural awareness. And that, that is the question, I mean, every day, something is going on in our society right now and I think teachers need to teach those moments. What's happening in our country, in our state? Should you take a knee? Should you not take a knee? Should you, what does black lives really, do black lives really matter? What does it mean? Et cetera. There's so many teachable moments and they can be taught in kindergarten to 12th because students are aware of what's going on, they see it, they don't necessarily understand it and it's not about being political, it's just about talking about it, just talking about it so that they are not afraid. And right now, some of our students are afraid. So, there's, there's a lot to this and we can go, I could go on for a long time about this as well. So, thank you very much for your presentation. We continue and this takes us now to operations. And Mr. Hockes.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board and Mr. Superintendent. I think we're moving into evening now, so I'll. So, my first agenda item for you this afternoon is just a update on solar energy. So, we've had it, we've begun a discussion about looking at solar and, and I'll, I'll talk about it in the bond projects here, just the discussion that we're having there. But myself and Senora Flores, we met with the local solar company and it was very, it just is an informative fact-finding mission about where to get started. It was very informative and as a matter of fact, a couple of really cool facts that, that we learned that I wasn't aware of is, City of Las Cruces is 25% solar right now, which is really awesome. We learned of some school districts, I know Santa Fe Public Schools is another school district that, they're 25% solar. And so, the, the contacts that we had were absolutely amazing. So, we've reached out, I've discussed this with my operations team and we've reached out to Santa Fe Public Schools and we're reaching out to Rio Rancho Public Schools, they're another one, and the City of Las Cruces and we're looking at in the next couple of weeks, possibly doing a field trip. So, we could all go up and kind of ta- talk to them about how they kind of, how they got the momentum going, how they got the project started and then, kind of what's their vision and focus and what are some of the things that they learned? So, as we investigate more, we will have information to bring forth to the board to share about those projects and feasibility. So, technology's moving so quickly and even just in the projects that have happened and the information we gathered, I mean, it's, it's pretty, pretty amazing. So, they also, we also talked about funding options and there's some really, really amazing funding options out there. There's some, there was some federal bond money, which doesn't affect our bonding capacity and it's actually more of a grant, but that was, that's available to school districts as well. And then, we just talked about some different options of solar arrays. So, one of the things I know with my team we talked about was, we don't want it on roofs for a couple of reasons, just because we're, we're penetrating our roofs, a lot of our roofs are flat roofs and if we have to do roof work or we have any damage, then we're pulling everything off and putting things on. But there were some really, really cool solutions that they had for us. So, we're super excited and we will keep you informed as to our field trip and then share that information that we gather with you all so we can move forward and if you'd like to make any decisions with that, that'd be awesome. So, with that, I stand for questions on solar.
Board members, any questions?
No questions.
Okay.
Madam President, I think if a board member wanted to go with Mr. Hockes.
Okay.
He's a great driver, you're in a comfortable car. Would enjoy the trip, so we would certainly invite if one of you would like to go, just let, let Mr. Hockes know.
Absolutely, we'll communicate that and we'd love to, more eyes and ears there.
Thank you.
Madam President, members of the board and Mr. Superintendent, our next, my next agenda item is review of safety goals with technology. So, for that, we have Mr. Matt Dawkins from TSS to come talk to us. Yes, is it TSS? I'm sorry, I was trying to.
He's now a director in.
That's right.
Albert, what is his title?
Director of Information Technology.
Excuse me, Director of Information Technology. Yes, so with that, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Mr. Director, come forward.
You're my favorite director.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent. I'm gonna go over a couple of things with you pertaining to technology's role in the safety goals in the 2014 bond. Uh-oh, doesn't appear to be working. Next slide, please.
I'm glad you're the director. Those things only happen to me when I'm up there, so.
We're gonna have to get some batteries there. So, we had five major areas that the technology department was dealing with, door buzzers, which are the, kind of the speakers at the front of the school where, so the door's locked, you hit the button, identify yourself and they let you in. Access control card readers, so the little cards that everybody carries around to unlock doors, surveillance cameras, intercoms and fire alarms. Next slide, please. The door buzzers project was discontinued partway through. We found a much more effective alternative using a single point of entry. We actually bring visitors into the front office, they're face-to-face with a human being rather than someone seeing them on camera and talking to them over the phone. There's a lot less ways to, to kind of circumvent that process and we thought it was a much more safer alternative, even though it's a little more expensive. So, we've done a few sites with the help of the construction department and we've proposed more sites for 2018 bond so we can kind of get everybody there. Access control, there are 22 sites out of 40 that we're scheduled to receive it that are remaining. On average, we're doing four to 10 doors at each site. So, we always hit the front door, side doors, some of the more common access areas, playgrounds, that sort of stuff. And right now, every site except White Sands School have some card readers, at least the front door and the kitchen, things like that. But I have a list there in front of you for the sites that are remaining. Next slide. Surveillance cameras, we have 11 sites out of 36 that still need to have surveillance cameras added. The kind of general plan was six cameras at elementary schools, 15 cameras at the middle schools and 35 cameras at the high schools. In some cases, we've exceeded that. Once we get to the site and do an evaluation, we adjust accordingly because every site's a little bit different and they all have their own trouble spots. To date, we have a little over 750 cameras. By the time this project is done, we'll have close to 900 in the district. So, that's a lot of surveillance cameras. And as you can see, there's a list of the 11 schools that are still scheduled to have cameras installed. Next slide. Intercoms, the eight sites we identified in this bond to have their intercoms kind of standardized and modernized. What we're doing here is we're going with a completely new system, it's IP-based, it's much more reliable and we have a few more sites that we're proposing for the 2018 bond. We have six out of the eight remaining. You'll see that O'Nate has 2018 in parentheses. We wired it, but there were some unforeseen complications in that one and so, we kind of ran out of money on that first portion. So, we're gonna recommend that we continue that in 2018. Next slide. And fire alarms, we have four sites remaining that are gonna get updated fire alarm systems. Once this is done, every site will have a uniform fire system that we understand to manage and, and it'll be completely modern. This is by far the longest process because of all the approvals and drawings and engineering that goes into it. So, we have four sites. Everything, I think that's it. Next slide. Yeah, so, we plan on having everything completed by June of 2018, provided we don't run into any more issues and I stand for questions.
Board members, do we have any questions?
Questions.
This is to show a commitment that we are working on safety, number one, for our bond committee and so, that's why we just wanted a review. Mr. Haddamio?
Madam President, all schools have cameras in there though, right now, they're just gonna be updated, correct?
Madam President, Mr. Haddamio, not all schools currently. We are prior, some, so, let me go back. Of the 11 schools that remain, there's a handful that don't have any cameras, so we're prioritizing those first. Then, the schools that do have cameras only have two or three. So, we're gonna be adding back that functionality. So, but right now, we're prioritizing schools with no cameras at all.
So, just for my, my purposes, so when, if, if there was a situation that's happened before and we say we would take over the cameras and we see those things, there are schools, so if there was a situation at a school with no cameras, that means that we would not be seeing anything, correct?
Correct. But, like I said, there's very few.
And this is a concern to us. I mean, this is why, when you look at those, if we have a situation in a high school in, when the crisis team comes to my office, Matt actually takes control of those 35 cameras and we actually can see and then we get on the phone with normally Gabe and Dr. Lozano put on their Superman capes and drive to the site and we can communicate with them and tell them what we're seeing as they communicate with the police. So, for us, not to have cameras is a, is a concern.
So, when this says 11 of 36 sites remain, that means 11 schools do not have cameras?
Let me look at this list, one, two. So, there's about 10 schools left that have zero cameras. Well, maybe nine. It's hard for memory, there's 900 of them.
Yeah, and so, we're, we're hopeful through 2018, using the 2014 bond money, I think this was an initiative of Mr. Vega and Matt's department is to get cameras up everywhere. And I really commend you for looking at where we were behind, where we didn't have that equipment, where it was needed and then going to Ms. Galván and finding the money in the bond and making sure all of that was appropriated and approved. That's a, a, a big task.
And we're moving the fastest on surveillance cameras because I have multiple contractors assisting with this, so we can do multiple sites at one time and so, we're moving pretty fast.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Madam President, I have a question. So, are, do all high schools have cameras?
Yes, all except for the Rio Grande Preparatory Institute.
So, so is it mostly elementary that don't have the cameras?
Correct, mostly elementary.
And is it because we ran out of money?
It was kind of the way the order of things fell. The high schools had construction projects, so we kind of added that in there. It was never a money issue, but, for example, like Las Cruces High School got surveillance cameras with their remodel, Centennial got it when it was built, Early College got it when they were built, so it was just timing.
Timing.
So, so we're gonna catch up?
Yes, we're, we are on it, top priority and it's something that we need for safety and security of the building, of the principals, of the teachers, of the EAs and of the students.
Okay, well, any more questions or comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Dawkins.
Excellent, thank you, nice presentation. Excellent, thank you, nice presentation.
All righty, Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Superintendent, if I may continue, my next item is the 2018 bond committee update. So as Senora Flores and Ms. Domino, we've been working tirelessly, meeting every week, working and sorting through bond projects, so we have spent, our whole, our entire committee has spent hours and hours of visiting school sites, doing, doing some homework. We actually had one of our meetings at the physical plant warehouse location last week, just to look at some, just our facilities that we have over there. So in, in front of you, you have, you have some projects, so a couple of things I just wanted to go over in my update is that, so our bond for 2018, to be clear, is $50 million. So we will be, that's our bonding capacity according to our financial services department. And then just the projects that you have in front of you, these are, this, we've started our work, we still have a lot of work to go, so we are actually meeting tomorrow, and we're going, we're gonna be plugging in some prices. Again, we're working as a committee to make recommendations to the board, and then this is, then you'll, it's, it will be your, our recommendations to you, and then you, you all will make those final decisions, and we'll be available for questions and, and some rationales as to how we put these on. So at this point, these are not in any order, these are just projects that we've reviewed in looking at data from our architectural research company, and the information that we have from our homework, this, these are just projects that we feel have risen to the top or stood out, and then we'll start working on that. $50 million unfortunately doesn't get us very far, but it gets us to a really good place. So just one thing I wanted to mention, Lynn HVAC, so this is something that was from the 2014 bond. We were anticipating, or my predecessors and everybody before us were anticipating that PSFA would participate in that, and so we set aside a third, they did not, so therefore that's something that we promised the voters, and we'll need to go ahead and, we feel like we're gonna recommend that, and that, that's, that's a project that we need to take care of first. Some other, just kind of, we're calling them buckets of money that we'll present to the board as land purchase and a contingency fund, our ADA bucket, and then renewable energy or solar. Something really interesting with the hurricanes, construction prices, you know, we know that we're headed down kind of a crazy road with that, and I know in talking to Ms. Martinez, our Director of Construction, that, I mean, 30% increases, I mean, those are things that, that are doable, and of course, supplies and materials as well are gonna become scarce, concrete, steel, all those different things. So with that, I stand for questions.
Board members, any questions or comments? Thank you.
All righty, Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Superintendent, my next item is water quality testing for Los Cruces Public Schools. So we had some communication and discussion about looking at testing our waters in our school sites for hard metal, and so in working with our physical plant department, Mr. Bobby Stout, Matt Dynick and their teams, we're working on just kind of doing a little bit more investigating, I guess, and Mr. Stout and his team were piloting a school, just to kind of wrap our minds around this, look at costs, look at kind of a procedure, and we're excited. The samples were collected on Friday, and so hopefully, as soon as we get some information, maybe by the next board meeting, we'll have an update as to how it went, and we can kind of give you, we can share details with you all and, and make our recommendations, and then, and then move forward with the board's wishes as we go forward. So with that, I stand for questions.
Okay, board members?
Madam President?
Yes.
When was the last time the water was tested before this, or, 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 when, I mean, it seems like we're starting a procedure, or we're piloting a procedure, so I just wanna know, are my children's water safe at their school?
So I'm gonna ask Mr. Stout to come up here, so he's, he's been here, I believe, 11 years. So what I do know, and I believe I've shared this with you all, is that, so the water is tested coming into our school sites by the city, and let me, I'm going to yield and ask Mr. Stout if he has the answer for that question.
In answer to your question, specifically at our sites, the water quality has never been tested, there's never been any reason to. We're assured by the City of Las Cruces through a federal mandate, they test annually for everything, everything from fecal coliform all the way to heavy metals, and they've always succeeded and reached every one of their goals. We're just being proactive with this measure today.
So it sounds like to me that we have guaranteed the water to our schools, and if we did random searches throughout time or whatever, we could just kind of have a little bit better of a, an understanding of where that, you know, and, and if we did see an issue, then we could do a more comprehensive study, correct?
That is correct, and that's the reason for our proactive approach.
So it's a little different than maybe what the public might think of, that, you know, that, and that's why I wanted to say that, because I think I've gotten a lot of community feedback that says that, you know, and when you, when you, when you say, oh, our water's never been tested, that's kind of what they hear, but it's really, it's really, we just kind of need a spot check here every once in a while, and then if there is, is there something, then we can go with that. So I think that satisfies my question and my concerns, too. Thank you.
And I have, I just wanted to ask, is it very costly to have each site tested? Do you know the cost yet? Yes.
Yes, ma'am, on a, basically, $50 a sample is what I was told.
Okay.
We're checking for two metals, copper and lead.
Okay. $50 a sample, and would that be like at each drinking fountain, or just one source from the school?
Multiple sources, the school that we picked.
Okay.
I requested 25 sample containers.
Okay.
$50 a piece.
Okay.
And we randomly walked through the school, and picked certain, from a drinking fountain to a hand wash sink.
Okay.
Boys and girls restrooms to staff.
Okay, so it's pretty comprehensive then on the campus.
Yes, ma'am, you bet.
Okay, thank you very much for doing that project.
So, Madam President, members of the board, if I may say one more thing, and Mr. Superintendent, so I thank you, Mr. Haddamio, for bringing that up. So we, I'm really proud of our team, because we, we're always, we're always trying to be proactive on, on some different things, and we have older buildings, older facilities, and even construction materials at those times were different, and Bobby and his team, I mean, they're, they're on top of student and staff safety, so we're really proud of that hard work, and if there's ever any questions or concerns, please share those with us, because that's our goal. They do a phenomenal job.
Outstanding, outstanding, I appreciate your time and effort, so thank you.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Superintendent, my next item is a safety and security update, and Ms. Nancy Cathy is going to be going over that with this. Mr. Gregory unfortunately had a family emergency this afternoon, so she's, she has some information to share with you about safety and security in our district, so.
We need to move it along. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Superintendent, I'm gonna share a little bit of information with you, and hopefully be able to answer any questions you have. If not, I'll get Todd back in two weeks, he can come talk to you again. So first of all, I want to tell you, we've created our, our new public safety department, and Todd is the leader of that, and he brings, you know, a wealth of knowledge and expertise to that, and we've added to that team Sean Barham, who has worked in many capacities in our district, he was an EA and a teacher, and then he moved up to our side of the house, and he worked in the first energy projects we had, he supervised custodians, he's worked in HR, so he brings all of that knowledge with him, and so he is going to function as our coordinator of transportation and start the work in risk management that we want to do, and he is also Todd's backup for all of the safety and security issues that we deal with from day to day. So that's the first part of our team. Annalysia Vias has been moved into our risk management specialist position, she's, she out of high school started as a temp secretary, and has worked her way up within the district, and has worked in transportation for a long time, she's super excited to be part of that team, and she's ready to go, so as soon as we get our office manager over there, because that's her job right now, she's still kind of filling both of those shoes, and we get the office manager, we'll have a complete team, and they have lots of great plans, and they're gonna be a very dynamic team, the four of them working together, so we're super excited for them to get going, so. So that's our basic structure, so then the next section we'll talk about a little bit is all the different types of duty, so I talked about safety, security, transportation, the risk management is new coming, it's gonna be taking some portions out of HR and moving them and combining them, so we'll do better jobs of following up on workman's comp, going out to the sites, see what happened, interviewing people. So we're hoping to help decrease the district's risk, to save us some money, and to greatly decrease the injuries to our employees and our students. They also have the Safe Routes to School program out of that department, and I know Ashley has been here several times to talk to you, and she always has a very exciting program going on, so she and her two champions work with Todd through there. Todd is a great liaison, as you all know, he was a prior police officer, and so he has great contacts throughout the city and the county, through the sheriff, police department, the fire department, the town of Mesia, so he's always out there, working with everybody, he has great relationships with NMSU as well, so he plays a great role there. So I want to talk a little bit about the campuses and the staff that we actually have out there. We have crossing guards at many of our schools, they are not our employees, they are employed by the city or the county, and we just work together to ensure that they're there when we need them, so, but that's Todd's job one more time, to coordinate. We have 30 campus guards, they're spread out through the district, the comprehensive high schools have four, the middle schools have one and a half, and then our alternative high schools have one or one and a half. That's kind of how those are divided up. And then we have the 10 resource officers, and then they have a sergeant that supervises them, and I know Todd is in regular contact with the sergeant, and that's who he goes to when there's incidents going on in our school district, and we found that a great working relationship. And then we also have the marshal at Mesia that has worked with us, and next meeting, you're gonna hopefully get an MOU to sign to increase our support from Mesia into Zia, where we have horrible traffic problems, I think you guys all are aware of that, so this is hopefully gonna be a person that's gonna help that, and also can support Mesia Elementary. So we're looking forward to that new relationship. So, professional development, Todd tries really hard to work and get things for our campus guards, and so the last one they did was on communication, information sharing between agencies, but he's done a lot and brought in outside speakers, and I know that they've been really appreciative of that, and he wants to continue to do more of that kind of thing, so.
And now, Madam President, if I may, we just want to make the, the board aware, and also just offer our thanks, these guards and SROs are the first line of defense should we have an issue in a school. Principals are in charge of their own buildings, some of them keep all outside doors locked except one. High school campuses, that's much more difficult. The board is aware, this was a public news story, I think it was the first or second day of school, we had a person enter one of the high schools armed with what could have been a, a weapon, it was a BB gun. We actually have all of this on camera, the campus security guard was the first person to come in contact with that individual, that happened within less than one minute or so of the person in the school. He called on the radio, the campus SRO, the school resource officer, approached the individual, they disarmed him from the weapon, and of course, the outcome, of course, was safety for our students, and so I know I want to say to the board, I want to thank you, you have, I think with some conversation, you changed the policy, you've allowed the superintendent to have some authority to talk about weapons in schools, the board still has the authority to override any decision I make on those, and I've publicly said that, you know, we don't like any weapons in schools, or bullets flying, or any of that such, we want to teach, but we have to be ready in case there ever is an issue, and so we have armed Todd, and we have our armed SROs in each building, and even this building now, we have an armed officer in here with us now. And we're in the 21st century, and as we begin to look at safety and security issues, I would just ask the board to remain positive with me, we want to focus on teaching and learning, but we still have to focus on student safety, and as much as we look at weapons and police officers as something that should be out in society and not in our school buildings, it is something that we need. And so when we see a presentation like this, just to see that we have this many resources available for schools, this is very good, but we have more work to be done. And as you can imagine, I know some of you on the dais were elementary school teachers, and you're gonna say, where's, where's the rest of the help? So we continue to coordinate every day, that's something that we'll certainly look at in the budget, that's something that we talk about even as an executive cabinet, and that is, what could we do better to provide safety and security, not only to students, but to our employees and our families as well? And I can tell you that Nancy will know, these folks work 24/7, there's a call coming through constantly, and then when we actually go into a crisis mode and we activate the crisis team, Nancy's the director of that crisis team, and we end up in my office in crisis mode, these security guards and police officers are extremely valuable in what's taking place on the campus, so.
There was one additional thing that Todd and I talked about on the phone for me to talk to you all about, and that's the difference between a shelter in place and a lockdown.
Sure.
So, so a shelter in place, anytime there's any concern at all, it brings everybody indoors, and it locks all your perimeter doors, and so that's the one that we most commonly use, it's also the one we use for weather, 'cause it gets everybody inside, and then we have some kind of control over what's going on. Lockdowns are to be restricted to times when there's an imminent danger, because that's when instruction stops, lights turn off, kids, everybody hides, and it's a very scary thing to have to go through, and so we try to restrict those as much as possible. As you all know, we had an, an elementary school, yeah, elementary school, going to lockdown recently, and that was what was necessary at that point in time. We try to lift a lockdown as quickly as we can and move it back to a shelter in place, so that we still have more control over the comings and goings of the school, but it allows the kids to continue to lock, that's kind of the major difference.
Sure, and oftentimes, the police will ask us to place a school either in shelter in place or a lockdown, and that procedure is immediately to notify the board president, and then we eventually notify the board as a whole. We also notify all parents when that occurs, and we place something on the district website. I have said to principals, you are in control of your own buildings, they have the authority to place those in either a lockdown or a shelter in place at any time, and I've said to them, I want you to feel comfortable in any decision you make, if we go into a lockdown and it was a mistake, then we can come out of that easily, but if we don't go into a lockdown, and if harm were to occur to a child, we can't undo that. And so, but as Nancy says, we are cognizant of learning, and as our Linda says, she's the heartbeat of the district, and we want that to occur at all times, but we do have the capability, and I, I feel very secure knowing that we have an excellent trained force, I appreciate all the work they do, and I mentioned Officer Tim earlier, but we're about to see one of, he's one of our guards, and maybe you can explain the difference in a moment, Nancy, between an SRO and a guard, but he's going to be going to Puerto Rico to help citizens there, but he's one of the folks that we rely on on a daily basis.
Thank you for that presentation on safety.
Thank you, Nancy, and if I may add one more, just a quick comment, Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Superintendent, so in, in, in our restorative justice movement as well, one of the things that has been really amazing is that positive interaction with law enforcement at our school sites, and really working, I've got to thank our, our police force as well as our security guards, and, you know, really focusing on being about kids, and really working on how do, how do we, how do we keep kids, staff, schools safe, but also be about second, third, fourth chances, because we all grew up, and we all, we all learned from, as somebody said earlier, not necessarily our right answers, but sometimes the wrong answers and, and our wrong choices, so I'm, I'm really proud of them, and just want to send a thank you to them and all of our security team, so.
Let me just add one more comment, we, we've been in some schools lately, and I talk to students, and I'll always say to them, tell me three things I can do to make your school better, and you would be surprised at the answers, but more often than not, the first thing I get is give us another police officer, which surprises me, which tells me that students are watching them, and they like having them around them. The second thing they will say, I'm looking at Nancy in the back, they want that old-style food that I had when I was in school, so they always say, change the lunches, and then the third thing they always say to me is give them free tickets to the sports events. And so that's what the students are focused on, but their first priority, and you would be surprised, middle school students, so far in all of my visits, every one of them have said, give me another police officer or security guard, and they use those words interchangeably, and our SROs are armed individuals, and our security guards are not armed at this time. Thank you, Todd.
So Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Superintendent, my final agenda item is a construction projects update that's provided to you by our amazing Director of Construction, Gloria Martinez, and with that, I stand for questions.
And we got those pictures, I, I don't know, board members, do you have any questions or comments?
I do.
or comments? There was a concern brought to me about Las Cruces High School and kids getting too close to, or walking through certain areas.
So Madam President, we did go out, and Todd Gregory went out and looked at some things and worked with the principals, I also worked with Dr. Sedano on that, and we're looking at, there were, there were some areas that we had concerns, so Ms. Martinez worked with the contractors to make sure we got some permanent fencing up and kind of redirecting some students, there were some areas that we thought were fairly secure, but it's, it's, you know, we don't want anything to happen to students, so we got, we got on that right away ma'am, and we'll follow up.
Thank you for looking at that.
Absolutely, thanks for that information.
Okay, great.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hockes.
So that takes us now to Equity, Innovation and Social Justice with Dr. Lozano. If we are still awake around here. This has been a busy, busy meeting here.
Well, wake us up.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, we have two presentations for you this evening. The first is one of the monthly updates that we'll be providing you related to ethnic studies and to restorative justice. Thank you both for attending, member Dollman and Señora Flores attended our first ethnic studies meeting, so with that I'm going to present to you Mr. Andres Armijo, who's going to provide you with the quick summary of both initiatives.
President Flores, and board, and Dr. Ewing, I'm happy to announce that we had our first initial ethnic studies meeting, so the ball is rolling with ethnic studies, and we had a ton of different organizations that had interest in this meeting as well as those that had interest that couldn't attend, so we're kind of, we're sad that we didn't get everybody, but we did get a lot. I'm gonna go ahead and read a list of the attendees that did attend. We had the National Education Association of Las Cruces, we had the Enlace program with Doñana Community College, multiple members from Las Cruces Public Schools in administrative and teaching, we had the Transgender Resource Center for New Mexico, we had the PFLAG Las Cruces Organization, we had Las Cruces Public Schools Board of Education, of course, NMSU College of Curriculum and Instruction, College of Criminal Justice for NMSU, which again, I'd like to give credit to Dr. Natividad and Dr. Lada, who were the forefront of starting this initiative with the board, CSEC Las Cruces for our classified employees, the NAACP for Doñana County, we had the Confucius Institute for NMSU, we had the Islamic Center of Las Cruces, and the Las Cruces City Council Representative. So we had a huge turnout, everybody was eager to talk about this initiative, as we did have the board resolution with, from you guys in May of 2017, we discussed multiple items. It was kind of an open forum, we did that on purpose, this first go around, we wanted to get everybody's input, we wanted to hear what everybody wanted to do with this, and we had interest in going K through 12 with ethnic studies, and also looking at content and course levels, so we're gonna explore doing this district-wide. And, and our next, our next meeting is to come, the date hasn't been set just yet, right now I'm working on coordinating a website for the entire task force, working website, so that way people can attach documents to it from multiple organizations. I've had a lot of input already from people that attended conferences, they want to update the, the task force on that. Also, we're creating four different working groups for this ethnic studies committee, and I wanted, I wanted to announce those different groups, we have one working group of curriculum and content development, we have one for implementation process development, one for community partnership liaisons, and one for measurement and data research. So we're looking at our next meeting to be kind of a working meeting, we're gonna ask multiple members to sign up for different working committees and create timelines, because that's what the task force was, was also curious about, was different timelines of how this is gonna roll out, and then we're going to go forward with that. I stand for any questions on the ethnic studies.
Board members, any questions or comments? Okay.
Excellent work, and Madam President, just to remind you and the board, we will give a monthly update to the board, as when we created this division, that was my promise to you, as we continue this very important work, and just to hear that list of organizations and folks who came, people are taking this very seriously, and we're very appreciative. And Andres, we need to, also, I instituted a new rule, you could wear a shirt for a school, and so I, I want you to give a shout out to the school you're wearing the shirt for today.
I was gonna give the shout out during my next presentation, because that's the restorative justice pilot, but this is Booker T. Washington Elementary, the Wildcats, so go Wildcats tonight, they're actually the first pilot to give me a shirt, so the rest of the pilots give me a shirt, and, and we can, and I'll shout, shout out to you as well. So I'll go on to the restorative justice initiative, I just wanted to give a couple updates that are new. We are having the first restorative justice task force meeting on October 10th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. We do have Mr. Frank and Mr. Harameo as our board representatives, if you could please attend that, that'd be great. We're gonna have it here at the Teaching and Learning Center, again, I think I sent an email out to you guys already on that and tagged you on that, but we're gonna have all of the pilots, we're gonna have multiple teachers, custodians, EAs, we're having everybody involved with the restorative practices that we can attend from the pilots, because we want full transparency from all of them, and we're gonna go briefly over kind of the foundational process of it, which you guys got in your last packet, and, and also, we're gonna discuss timelines and rollout processes for different levels for elementary, middle school, and high school levels. So we're looking at that, also, we're looking to invite SROs and police officers, just, or the police officer, SROs, and the security guards to be a part of this, as Mr. Hockes just did say, that we're trying to, you know, also work with the community in this. Another one quick update I wanted to say is that we are taking pilot representatives and district representatives to Arlington, Texas, this is gonna be October 22nd through 25th, and we're going to a large restorative justice conference in Texas, that, the Texas state is really innovative in rolling this out statewide, and it's for districts to really get a feel on how to roll this out in a district-wide approach rather than, rather than just school approach. So we're taking that, and we're considering the team as the core team within the restorative practices task force to guide the district on those decisions and help with the task force. Is there any questions on restorative justice?
Board members, well, looking forward to that first meeting.
I plan to attend.
It's gonna be great.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andres.
Madam President, I could add one more comment regarding ethnic studies, thank you for stating the connection between civic education and ethnic studies, I was actually thinking that when I was sitting there, so I, just to let you know, we do have many of Arlinda's people up in, for the academic division, that are part of the ethnic studies task force, I know Wendy is part of it, so just know that we are gonna be collaborating in, when, when the work starts of the curriculum development.
Sure, and, and I just want to add one comment to your comment, is the fact that one of the myths about ethnic studies is it's not just for minorities, it's for everyone.
That's right.
It is a civic kind of, of engagement or teaching, it's for everyone.
Thank you for that. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, I want to invite Dr. Jennifer Han and Ana Candelaria, who is our bilingual coordinator, up to the podium. Now they have, we have a presentation now on something that I was just telling Dr. Ewing the other day that I'm really proud of, we've gotten great feedback from our schools, our four international welcome centers, this was something that Dr. Ewing, one of the first things that he spoke to me about when I started in this position, his vision for really supporting our students in the secondary schools, that are English learners, immigrant students, migrant students, and international students. This is something that has been needed in our district, and I know from talking to teachers, administrators, they are really appreciative of the support that they receive so far. So with that, here is Dr. Han and Ana Candelaria.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Superintendent, Ana and I are so thrilled to be here tonight to talk about the International Welcome Centers. It's been such a blessing to be able to implement these programs in our high schools and middle schools, and we are so excited to say that we welcome immigrants to our schools and to our country. So I just wanted to, next slide please, I'd like to just review, just quickly what the goals of the International Welcome Center are, and of course, it is to create that welcoming place for immigrant students, our migrant students, and international students who are also English learners, but of course, we want to support their academic outcomes, absolutely, as students, we want them to graduate, we want them to succeed in their educational journeys, but we also are looking at the whole child as well, we want to make sure that their social and emotional well-being is taken care of, we also want to make sure that their families are taken care of, so we want our schools to be welcoming and open places for all of our families regardless of what languages they speak or what countries they may come from. And of course, we have the federally and state mandated data that we have to keep in order to justify the funding for which we are using to, to support the centers.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Superintendent, it is my pleasure to be here and share with you who our staff is, we of course have Dr. Lozano and Dr. Han, who's Executive Director of our team, I am the International Welcome Center Coordinator, and we have four advisors in, for, in the four high schools, we have Mayfield, Centennial, Oñate, and Las Cruces High School, and I would like to also thank Mary Esther Beltranz Smith, who has been here, she is the advisor at Oñate High School.
Excellent.
Thank you for being here.
Can we give her a round of applause?
Of course. So, Mary Esther, why don't you come stand with them while they do the presentation? Excellent.
That way we recognize you when we go to Oñate.
So, we have three levels of supports for our students, and that, so, I'm, I'm sorry, we have three levels of support that we offer through our centers, one obviously is for students, the other is for parents, and the third is for schools. So the support for students is really a collaborative effort among the administrative team, the teachers, the International Welcome Center Student Advisor, our department, the academic division, we work together to make sure that we are providing those wraparound services for our English learner students in a very comprehensive way, not only meeting their academic needs, but their social and emotional needs. In addition, with immigrant funding, we were able to purchase laptop carts for each of the high schools, and so those are going to be used to assist the students with their schoolwork, but also to help parents access resources that they may need in the community.
Which leads us to the next connection that we have with the parents, the four advisors do have their own rooms in each high school, they're also servicing middle schools as well, and their services involve conferencing with the parents regarding program services, also with families, giving them contacts to outside agencies, and like Dr. Han said, which is something very important as we are transitioning to a paperless grading system, this has been a great asset to our centers as the parents utilize the computers and the internet to track the students' grades and attendance. Also, we do have monthly meetings, and during these monthly meetings, we are getting out the information to parents about college readiness, graduation requirements, and helping students develop reading and math skills, if they need support, we, we have tutors for them as well. And of course, we have translation, translating conferences or documents, and the, all the centers are open to all the parents of the students.
And the third level of support is obviously for our schools, we know our schools are burdened with a lot of testing, and with a lot of demands from state and federal guidelines, so we wanted this advisor to really be able to help out the schools with some of that testing. So you'll see some of the initial screening of, of students, and also with the assessment for measuring proficiency in Spanish language proficiency and English language proficiency. We also make sure we maintain the data to show that we are, are reporting our students to, to the state and to the federal government, and we also help with placement of students so that they're, we make sure they're getting into the right classes. Oftentimes, English learners are not placed correctly, and that is detrimental to their education. We also provide translation services for students, teachers, and parents at the school site, we can assist with differentiated instructions and coaching of teachers in effective strategies to shelter instruction for English learners, and we've also collaborated with special education staff members to make sure that our English learners who also are, have special needs, get both the services they need for their, for their disability, but also to attain proficiency in the English language. And with that, we stand for questions.
Well, board members, any questions or comments?
I have a quick comment.
Yes.
I just, I just wanted to say thank you, and anybody, anytime somebody says the whole child, social, emotional, and the foundational relationships, I, I am a huge believer in relationship, it just makes me happy, and I just, I just want to say thank you, I had nothing to do with this, but I feel proud to be a part of a district that is doing something, and you guys, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I left, I was remiss in leaving out the fact that we also support middle schools, so each of our International Welcome Center Student Advisors supports some middle schools that feed into the high school, so we're, we're, we, it is our hope that this initiative is so successful that we can expand that into the middle schools. And I do also want to thank Dr. Ewing for his vision with these centers, as well as Dr. Lozano for giving us the resources and the guidance to implement these centers. We're really proud to be part of the Division of Equity, Innovation and Social Justice, and we think this, the welcome centers fit perfectly into that division.
Yes, and I, I just want to say myself that I know that there's been problems with student transcripts from other countries, I'm really glad that we're addressing that issue, because students were starting with zero credits, and that was holding things up for them, for the students. The other thing is, this has been needed for a long time, and it's funny, I was just at Mayfield and I saw the sign, but that has always been an attendance office, so I didn't even think of going in. So, so now I know, and I looked at the sign and I said, that's new, and, and then I went straight to the other way, and I didn't read the door, so I'm, next time I'll stop by, but I'm very excited about this, this is a great improvement for all our high schools, and I think a good place for our translation pathway if there is one in the future.
We're just getting started. Give us a few months and we'll give you another update.
Sounds good, thank you for all your work.
Madam President, if I may, one, two, two last comments real quick, I promise, everybody. Dr. Wendy did have a training for counselors, high school counselors and our advisors, I think last week, on transcripts, because that has been an issue that we've encountered, so thank you to Dr. Wendy for setting that up and really guiding that work, and also one thing that we forgot, we, we omitted from our presentation was going back to Dr. Ewing's vision of having teachers teach, Mrs. Dollman was a former bilingual lead teacher at the middle school, and she was responsible for not only teaching a full load, but also testing kids that were English learners for keeping track of data, so that has allowed our teachers at the high schools, bilingual and ESL teachers, to really focus on their classroom and the instruction, so that, that's something that I know has made a huge difference, so I wanted to add that to the presentation.
Thank you.
As we look at the budget, we've already had some early conversations, Dr. Han is alluding to an expansion of the program, and I'm fully in support of that, that is something that we will bring to the board. That is something that we will bring to the board during the budget process to see if the board might be interested in allowing us to expand into middle schools. It's a most worthwhile program, and I can't thank you enough, and you've done in six weeks what it took me years to do in Atlanta, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Yes. Okay, so that takes us on to board items, and this next one is the discussion and possible approval of board members reciting the Pledge of Allegiance in Spanish in board meetings. Now, I just want to clarify that a constituent asked me one day, why we didn't do the, had I ever thought of doing the pledge in Spanish? And I said, "I never thought about it." And, and Dr. Lozano was standing by me, and I said, "I don't even know the words." So, then, I know that, that our students are reciting it in kinder, first grade, and some of the early grades in our dual-language program. They're already reciting the pledge in Spanish. I had never learned it myself, because I taught fourth and fifth grade, and by then, we were doing a lot of work in English. So, I asked him for the words at that particular point. When the next board meeting came up, I just remembered, right in the middle of the Pledge of Allegiance, that I had asked him for the words, and so I turned to him and asked, "Do you have the words?" And this is not something that our board members have had an opportunity to discuss. It was just a very spontaneous action on my part. I am very spontaneous sometimes, sometimes to my own detriment, but I wanted to give an opportunity for our board members to let me know what they think, because we really shouldn't do it without your approval. So, that is, I'd like to just start the conversation of what your thoughts are. Anyone can start.
I, I don't know it either, and I'm excited to learn. So, I think it, I think it's, I think it would be a good thing for our community. I think it's a good thing for us. I just need someone, I want to hear it, the words, and so maybe I can get Mr. Lozano, Dr. Lozano, to help me. Once I hear it, I think I could be able to say it. So, if, if, if the public, and if you guys wouldn't mind teaching me a little, I would love to be a part of it.
Okay, and I'm not polling right now, I'm just asking for them to give their, their insights.
On my end, I'm going to need, not a little bit, but a lot of instruction. But, yeah, it would be, be a challenge, and it would, you know, challenges are good.
Okay, and?
Madam President, as a bilingual teacher, I always did it in my classrooms, especially in the elementary level. I do want to make a clarification. I did receive an email from a constituent of mine, asking me, if we were going to recite the, the pledge in Spanish, what country was I going to pledge to? Was it going to be to Mexico, or was it going to be to the United States? So, my response was very diplomatic, and I said, you know, the beauty of bilingualism or multilingualism is that you can say one thing in many different languages and mean that same thing. So, we will still be pledging to the United States, just in a different language. So, that needs to be clarified, because as a monolingual speaker, sometimes we quite don't understand that. So, of course, we want to make our district inclusive, and so I support it 100 percent.
Mm-hmm. Dr. Ewing, or, or Mr. Adamio, you wanted to add something?
Just, just for, on, on, on Terry's, Ms. Dahlman's comment, there was a wonderful commercial, I don't know, on the Super Bowl or something, and it had a song, and it was just in different, like, it was the same song, but it was just in different languages.
Probably for Coke or something.
Something like that, I don't know. But I remember, you know, it was, it was a lovely thing that I saw. I know that got a lot of feedback and a lot of things, but anyway, it just reminded me of that, when you said that, so.
There's no downside to being bilingual.
No.
I mean, so.
I would just say, I've spent my career as a foreign language teacher, so anytime we introduce language to students or to the community, as an educator, I'm going to be excited about that. We just heard a presentation on International Welcome Centers welcoming different groups of individuals who may not all speak English when they first arrive here, and we've heard a presentation on restorative justice and a presentation on ethnic studies. And all of what we're talking about and all of the work that we're doing and what we believe in, from my administration, is being inclusive. And so, how can you say that we're not being inclusive to say words in another language? So, as a foreign language teacher, we would never turn down the opportunity to have words expressed in another language and to get students excited about another language. Oftentimes, I had a university professor who told me, "Why do we study foreign language?" And she said, "If for nothing else, world peace." And I think we forget that sometimes. And so, from my chair as superintendent, I'm proud of the work we do, and I would be proud, and I'm going to say that my Italian words might come out more than the Spanish words, and you've already heard my butchering of a name tonight, so Mr. Frank and I might need extra help from Dr. Lozano, but we would be proud to do that.
So, then, what was I going to, it also has to do with civics. This is another lesson in civics right here. Maybe our teachers can discuss it with their students as well, and tell, let us know what they think. I think this is an opportunity to, to expand our conversation. So, it's not just, it doesn't just happen in the boardroom, it happens in the classroom as well. That's, that's our main job. So, then, I will go ahead and entertain a motion to approve board members reciting the Pledge of Allegiance in Spanish in board meetings.
So moved.
Second. Okay, Mr. Frank and Ms. Dahlman, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so the motion passes. And we, the board will recite it next time, for the first time, and then we'll decide if it takes time, or, you know, see what, and do it occasionally, I think. I don't think we have to do it every time, maybe on special days, when we're feeling like it, or when we're being spontaneous, okay? Thank you for that. Then, the other thing that we have under new business is a possible, a discussion on renewable, reusable energy and translation pathways. And I think that with Las Cruces, the city of Las Cruces going 25, being 25 percent solar-powered, and they're shooting for 100 percent, this is creating a new pathway of, of certification for our students, and this, this, this industry is growing so quickly that I think it's an excellent, possible, future pathway for our students. And then, I happened to, I was invited to Mayfield High School, that's when I saw that Welcome Center. I thought it was the attendance office. And the, the teachers there, there were three teachers that had invited me. I went to the National Honor Society in Spanish, and I spoke to the students there for 20 minutes in Spanish. These students speak better Spanish than I do, definitely. They grew up with it, they learned in it, and they speak beautiful Spanish. And the teachers were telling me that these students, that they need translators in the city, in the courts, in the city, everywhere we go, for our students, for our schools, and they have talked amongst themselves about creating a translation pathway. So, I'm asking the board members what they think, and then perhaps asking Dr. Ewing to look into it and to, to task the district and the administration with this. Board members, questions or comments, or what are your thoughts?
I'm on board.
Okay.
Definitely.
With both?
Yes.
Certainly, me too.
Okay, so, I don't know that we have, Mr. Adamio, do you have any questions?
I think the renewable energy is the way to go, and where we're going, and clean energy, and like Mr. Frank said earlier, you know, being bilingual is, is, is nothing, it's an asset, and so translation, there's going to be benefits for that all over the place, and I think it's a great thing for children to be able to be exposed to.
Well, these, these are new ideas that just, they come to me from the teachers, they come as we, as when we visited the solar power, uh, uh, business just recently, and then you just see these opportunities. So, I don't want to, I, and it's the way of the future. So, Dr. Ewing?
No, Madam President.
Any thoughts?
Thank, I want to thank you and thank the board. As the chief executive officer of the district, it's my responsibility to look at these types of items and determine what is beneficial for our students, and then bring that back in front of the board for an action, action item in the future. So, certainly, I think with staff, we will begin looking, I'm looking at Mr. Hockes for reusable energy, and I'm going to look back to Dr. Han and Dr. Lozano for the translation pathways. I think we need to work in conjunction with our curriculum department to ensure that we're hitting all areas, and perhaps we could, if we could look for maybe a presentation, Dr. Wendy, can we put you back on the podium next month? If we could begin to pull some information, what this would look like, where we might want to do it, what we could do. I'll speak to translation first, since that would be easier for me. If we were to seize on the opportunity of students who are already native in any language in the district, usually are native in listening and speaking skills. It's the reading and writing skills that are more difficult for them. So, normally, what we tend to do in high schools is put them in those advanced courses or the AP course, and a year of AP, whatever the language is, whether it's AP Chinese or AP Spanish, begins to teach them those writing and reading skills that are so necessary for them to actually become a translator. And so, if we could look at some of that, what courses we already have in place, I think this is simply just shifting the way we would have conversations with students. It's not as if we would have to create a whole lot of new courses, we already have those. We just need to show them the importance of what they could do with that skill set. And I think for reusable energy, just the mere fact that in our next bond, we're actually looking at solar energy, we're looking at solar energy within our schools, and knowing that the city is already 25 percent, I think this only makes sense for us to, to have a conversation. So, again, without polling the board, I will move forward with a presentation, and then we may make this an action item to ask the board if we present, and the board is so inclined to allow us, after we do a presentation, to move forward on the project.
Thank you, Dr. Ewing, and I'm not polling the board, but we don't have an opportunity to talk about this any other place. So, that's why I ask them their opinions, and do they see any problems with it?
And we want to, again, I think, reiterate to the public, we do this in public. We don't have any of these conversations behind any doors.
No.
And I think this is the beauty of, of, of public discussion.
Going back to the, the, these possible pathways, I think Excel and the Las Cruces High School Academy are also places to explore these things as well, so.
Sure.
Okay, so, we'll move on to, I think this is the last item, the second reading and approval of policy, KCB School Advisory Council. It was taken off consent, so I think, go ahead.
Sorry, Dr. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent. Let me just start by saying that, yes, the policy that was submitted for the board's packet online had a footer that, that said page one of two, and that was a discrepancy. The policy indeed is only one page, and this has been corrected, and, and, and the corrected policy is in your folder on your desk.
Okay.
So, having said that, this is, this is the second reading policy of KCB School Advisory Councils. The change is to replace language in section two of the policy with regard to the No Child Left Behind Act. The amendment is required due to December 10, 2015, reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, whereby renaming it Every Student Succeeds Act. This policy was submitted for first reading at the September 19, 2017, regular board meeting. Due to the minimal change, administration recommended the policy move forward for a second reading and approval at this October 3, 2017, work session. There has been no public comment to date, and approval is requested.
Okay, and board member Frank, do you have any other questions?
Just as, you know, having the footer removed, you know, removes any possible confusion that could result if somebody referred to the policy.
Not number two, yes, sir.
And we apologize, Madam President.
Yes.
Not catching that clerical error sooner.
So, with that said, um...
We're ready to, okay.
Sure.
I will entertain a motion to approve policy KCB School Advisory Council.
So moved.
I second.
Okay, Mr. Frank and Mr. Adamio, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so this is now approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I need, do I have any public comment today? Do we have public comment?
Ms. Galvano, or?
No? Okay, so then I won't read any statements or anything, and I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. The meeting is now closed. Thank you so much for your patience.
Thank you, board.